All right, good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, January twenty eighth at six P M. I will officially call this board meeting to order. We'll start with our real call. If we can actually start at the left side of the table today.
Babe Larson.
Terrence Bump, District Four.
Hello, everybody. Dr. Concepcion's superintendent, Sheher. Hey, I'm Carly Hoover. I'm pronouncing it as District One.
Kate Collins, Director of District Two.
Francis Anderson, District Three.
Eden Halleck, Junior Student Representative.
I'm Rihanna Dela Cruz, sophomore student representative.
Alex Brewster, Senior Student Representative.
Right, thanks, everyone. And welcome to all our guests, joining both in person and online. So we'll start now with our man and member acknowledgement. I don't know if you can read that, but they're rushing.
We have the title of the school district knowledge with the land where we pitched collaborating. Learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish. And the Opaquio people passed in president. And I would gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and Opaquio tribes. And the public school district, they have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land. And we strive to work alongside the Duamish and Opaquio people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. We further acknowledge that the burden on environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls by the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. Remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to the day of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary traffic forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have been historically and currently enforced and created inequities among the people we serve.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite those who would like to stand and so we can.
I, Reverend Terrence. Speaker of the House, on the United States of America. Considerate of the court which stands one nation, one justice, one liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we recently had a board session where we had opportunity to really come together and think about our individual and board collective board values. And we narrowed it down to these three, so three, yeah, four, excuse me. So we'll be starting every meeting similar like we did with the courageous conversations norms previously. Start every meeting with these, just to kind of name a little bit about what this is. So the the value is there in bold, so transparency, courage, righteousness, curiosity, respect. Really focused on that centering humanity. And then the text beside it is really kind of how we intend kind of to operationalize those values. So I just want to get a second for those to read those for this first time. I'll read all of the texts, but then moving forward, we'll just kind of do a refresher about these are our four overarching, excuse me, five overarching values. So transparency, we as a board are committing to be honest, speak or communicate with your point of view and why. So really being clear about why we have the view that we do. Explain what you're doing in understandable or more simple terms, asking clarifying questions and breaking down what's being said. We are valuing and leaning to courage, so speaking frankly about the uncomfortable things. Listening deeply, listening to understand, not to respond, minimize multitasking, and then embrace the brainstorm. Lean into tough conversations, own mistakes, and address unintentional impact. Righteousness, which for us looks like relentless pursuit of exploring the right thing to do, to be or to become, sort of challenge versus taking the easiest or most cost effective path. Curiosity, so asking questions for understanding and suspending judgment. And then lastly, respect, centering the humanity, so finding out what respect means to each other. That's something that we're going to continually be working on. Active listening, seeing the whole person and recognizing what each of us might be bringing in in that day, right? We all have lives outside of this board meeting and ask anytime we're thinking about or having a conversation or about to make a motion or vote something, ask what the impact is on the people. Right, that's us and the folks in our community. Something else that you might hear us do, because one of our board goals, which we'll get to in a little bit, was about really creating a mechanism to support us in really holding each other accountable, not just to follow in these norms. To truly make sure that we're leaning into our anti-racist values as a district. So you might hear us say, this is going to be practice for all of us, it's new. We might say, values pause. And what that means is that means that, hey, we need to pause really quickly and check in. Where are we in alignment with our values? And particularly if something harmful happens, whether it's something that may be said in conversation or, you know, something that unintentionally that caused harm to our community. That includes things that might be said in public comment or by other presenters that are here in front of us. So if you hear us say values pause, we'll talk a little bit about what that is if it comes up. We'll see, it's all learning for all of us as well. Okay, so next we'll move to approve today's agenda. Hold.
So good.
All in favor?
All right.
Right, it is approved. So next we are going to do the oath of office for our newest member of the board, our sophomore student representative. Exciting. And just really glad that we were here to expand the student representative voice that's on this board because he has voice and input is so very valuable. We have very soon. Okay, I'm going to try and do my best, but I'll have this here so you can read it as well. Okay, I, Rihanna Dela Cruz.
I, Rihanna Dela Cruz.
Do solemnly swear that I, oh, sorry. That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will do my best, sorry, and will will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truly faithfully diligently.
And impartially perform the duties of the Office of Tuckwilla School District Student Representative.
And impartially perform the duties of the Office of Judgment. Wait, Office of Tuckwilla School District Student Representative.
To the Board of Directors in and for King County, Washington.
To the Board of Directors in and for King County, Washington.
And such duties are prescribed by law and policy.
As the duties are prescribed by law and policy.
Maybe for the sentences. All right, great, so moving on, we've got some recognition of some really amazing incredible folks in our system. To do that, we pass it to Dr. Juza.
Yes, hi, everybody. I'm just going to get in the line with my my agenda, making sure I follow the right next steps. So the first, so I'm really excited about this. So we this month are celebrating, this is a great honor for our National Board Certified Teachers. These are educators who have demonstrated the highest level of dedication to their craft. Achieving National Board certification is a rigorous, I'm sure you hold on in your head, and reflective process, one that speaks to a teacher's deep commitment to continuous learning and instructional excellence. These educators go above and beyond, inspire, challenge, and support our students. And their impact is felt in every classroom they serve. We are so proud of their hard work and dedication to our students. And so what I'm going to do is I actually have certificates for each of you. And if somebody would like to say something, that would be great. If you want to say something or someone's here would like to say something, that would be great. So I'm going to come over here, and I know that one of the people who could not be here is Courtney Martinez. And so Courtney Martinez is a teacher.
She's online.
Oh, online, Courtney's here. Do you want to say something else about achieving this accomplishment?
Sorry, hello, can you hear me? Let's see if I can figure out how to turn my camera on. I am out at the wonderful Camp Islandwood with our fifth graders. So sorry that I cannot be there in person and nor is my camera working for me right now. But thank you. I know it was a really difficult process to do, but it really it really made me a better reflective practitioner in how I operate and the in the systems I have in place in my classroom. So I I highly recommend the process for all educators because it was really, while it was difficult, it was it was eye opening at how like to improve my own practice. So, yeah, all I got, thank you.
And I know Courtney was one of the first people I have on here to Tuckwilla right away. And remember, the school for show routine, parent advisory, lots and lots of commitment to the district in so many ways. It's also parent in our district and educators. So thank you, Courtney, so much for saying a few words. The next person I have is Erin Payton. Yeah, is Erin here? No, so Erin is not here, so that's okay. And I just want to make sure that we clap for Erin. They did tell us early that they could not come, but I did want to make sure that we can hear them down in here as well. And then we have two more, and I want to make sure I have them to, if we have a, we have some here as a division and here to support. So I'm going to have them to you, and you can say a few words, and then we will move forward, all right? And then you can say some words as well. Thank you. I'll do the next one after you.
Okay, well, it is my honor to be able to present this to Ms. Emma Woll. And honestly, to come up with just a few incredible things about her. We could spend the next hour talking about all of the incredible things. First of all, and we've got our counselor here too, so you agree. Ava, Emma, I think is someone truly is there for our scholars. She absolutely cares about our scholars and, you know, it can be an absolutely crazy situation that's happened. And so Alex, so only have a few minutes until Kevin will talk, and she'll say, no, it's going to be okay. And then she'll say, well, what's going to be best for the, you know, for that scholar? And we problem solve. At this point, Emma has, she has inherited Spanish, and then she has a sixth grade ethnic studies class, goes back to a Spanish class, goes back to an ethnic studies class, and back to a Spanish class. And when I looked at that, I actually looked and said, you're absolutely incredible. You, and never once did she complain. I actually looked at the schedule and said, oh, no, I still realize what we did to you. And then again, absolutely gracious teacher, is one hundred percent here for our scholars. I was just thinking in the last eight years that I've known Emma, I don't think she's ever said no to anything, which she and I talked about could be a good thing for our life. One hundred percent committed to Tuckwilla, one hundred percent committed to our scholars. And I feel absolutely honored to have the ability to work with her every day. And please join me in congratulating her with the impact that she has.
Thank you so much. Is Kevin pre-tapped? Did I say it correctly? Kevin, no, I'm not here. Okay, well, Kevin is actually a foster high school, foster high school teacher and also could not be here. But we just want to make sure that Oliver too. So I want to make sure we can deliver the other two, so let's give Kevin a round of applause. Kevin, around, make sure I'll deliver Kevin and Erin, I think it's personally to them. And make sure that we give them, maybe make sure I'll have other classrooms and hand them to them. Because I think it'll be really important to make sure we mark that. So thank you, all of our National Board Certified Teachers. Thank you. So I'm going to do one more honor. And I think some of you know, because we have some signs up here for our new language classrooms, it's National Board Recognition Month. So I definitely make sure that I speak, and I actually I've been doing a lot of reflecting on the board, signature candidate, the board community, the board relationship. So it is super profound and important. Having a board that does values work consistently and really embodies and tries to live your values, I just, it's very impressive. And so I'll say a few words first, and then first, just want to extend our deepest appreciation to our incredible board of directors during National Board Appreciation, and we should be doing this every every month. Our board members are just more than decision makers. They are passionate advocates, dedicated learners, and unwavering supporters of our students, staff, and families. They work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure that every student has access to a quality education that are kind of academic growth, wellness, and social justice. Their leadership helps bridge gaps, build connections, and create a learning environment where all students can thrive. And we are truly grateful for their service and commitment to our district. And so I just, I I just shared an article recently. It was about how superintendents sometimes have to navigate systems with their own personal children, right? And so we talked about that. And one of the things I I added to that, because I had to navigate that as a previous job with new children in the system. But one of the things I said, which I wanted aspiring superintendents to know, is that it is, you can find that board that will support you, right? And I am a Latina mother, and I have children who are now from, and they're, you know, multiracial on and on. And I'll be honest, like, this community would fit them so well because of the board and the staff and the community that is here. So I reflect about that, and it is important that people like find boards that actually that they can work with. And it's not always perfect. Sometimes we have, you know, talk about things, and we don't always agree on everything, but we work together and we top it through. And and I will just say that I'm truly blessed to be in this community and working on each of all of you. So with that, can you give another round of applause? Good to meet you. Yes, we have Reverend Terrence Proctor. Charlie Simpson, Director Simpson, Director, Director Carly Hoover, Director Dave Larson. He's how I did this for a living as a teacher. Director Kate Krueger.
Thank you, nice surprise.
And our student, and so Rihanna, just like, you know, you just started, but I can't wait to give you a certificate next year. But Alex Brewster, who, by the way, he knows. Apologies, so we're going to miss them next year, and then you.
Thank you all so much. All right, so we're now moving into our first opportunity for public comment this evening. So if you're joining us online, if you'd like to offer public comment, you can do so by raising your hands or typing your name into the chat. You'll have a little bit of time to do that. We have one in person, a public comment this evening, so Brandon Eastman.
So hello, I'm Brandon Eastman. I'm actually kind of speaking on behalf of the parent advisory committee tonight. So I'll just kind of be reading a letter that we all kind of agreed about today. So, good evening, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the parent advisory committee. This year, we have been having meetings with the principals in the district in an effort to establish relationships and work toward common goals. Our three main goals we identified for these meetings have been academic successes and making sure we celebrate them, safety and community support, meaning families, teachers, and students. Something that has come up in our meetings is the desire for a technology literacy workshop for families. There are a number of ways that district and families can communicate. And increasing technology literacy is one way we can work together to address all three of these goals. Empowering families to understand and use the school communication platforms will strengthen the partnership between the district and parents. Familiarity with things like email, talking points, Skyward, and even text messaging will allow parents to be more involved and informed about the district. Families that have a better understanding of the tools and systems the district uses will be better able to assist and support their students' learning and school lives. We believe that it is extremely important to celebrate the many fantastic things that happen throughout the district. Families can be better informed about the things that are happening and the awesome accomplishments made by our students and staff. A more connected and more communicative district benefits everyone. School staff will have a benefit of better family involvement, and the families will have, be better able to support the students. We believe the district has many talented people that could help put on such a workshop. The district resources beyond the technological aspect would be translators, maybe some someone from a school office or anyone that could explain how and why these platforms are used. It wouldn't need to be an overly formal event. It could be just as simple as covering some basics and then allowing families to ask questions they have about how to better use the district platforms. The parent advisory committee would be happy to help facilitate the workshop any way we can. Thanks so much for your consideration. We look forward to hearing back.
Yeah. I need Dr. Juza, if that's something you can look into, and we'll connect back regarding what we're able to. Thank you. All right, anyone online? Doesn't look like it. All right. That's called up, okay. All right, so we'll move on. There's again, as always, an opportunity at the end to provide additional public comments based on our discussion this evening. Okay, so we'll move on to the reports section of our agenda, and we'll start with our student representative reports. Alex.
Yeah, I don't have too much to report about. I just wanted to say, just recently, I began pointing names, Dr. Juza, and also Naomi, Dr. Communications, a little bit about availability for discussing upcoming student advisory board meetings and also the upcoming, the upcoming legislative retreat to the Capitol. And I've been talking to a few students on the spot that might be interested in that. And if we don't know what that is, it's basically when a few of the school board members go down to the Capitol and talk to our district's representative in part. And this, I believe this, this one is going to be focused on the topic of school funding. And also, just recently, I went to the, what was it called? The school night bingo at Cascade View, and I just wanted to give a little shout out to the P T L. Or the, every parent in our district overall, because they did a great job of setting that up, and also very packed house. And I had a very good time with my little sister, and also great community building thing. So that was.
Since the last meeting, I've been attending the budget advisory committee meetings. As the only student on that committee, that has been one of the responsibilities that has been most pressing for me. I've been using my seat on that committee to the best of my ability to represent the needs of all the students that I represent. I think we all know that whatever decisions are made by the findings and results of that committee are of great importance and insight to all the students of the Tuckwilla School District. In my other duties and responsibilities of my other roles, I have been working to expand the horizons of the Foster High School Drama Club by the inclusion of other events such as joint A S V and Drama Club monthly movie nights, the first of which occurred on the twenty fourth of January. It was a Mother Success. Those types of events that are free and available to all students are dwindling. So it was a nice, you know, moment for all students of Foster to have an opportunity to come together and have a nice, you know, relaxing movie night at the end of the semester. In regards to the S S A B, the last meeting of which occurred before winter break, it was attended by less students than what was expected. But we should only take that, take this as a momentary hurdle. We plan in the next meeting of the S S A B to have a higher attendance than what occurred in December. Last week, I was part of the interview committee for the new position of sophomore student representative. The candidates that were interviewed were both recommended by, and in the end, I believe the representative that was selected, Rihanna, was perfect for the job. And I am very excited to see her take on that role and make the Tuckwilla School District a better place and for her to have the opportunity to represent all the students of the Tuckwilla School District. Good job.
Is there anything, you know, Rihanna, that you'd like to to say or share?
I just want to say that I was really surprised that I was the one who got the position. I was really like, the meeting went well, but I was still surprised since like, I'm not, I was one of the only meetings I've had throughout my life. Like, I think it's only second meeting or second interview that I've ever had. So I was really happy that I got accepted, but I'm excited to see what I can do.
Thank you. All right, next is our superintendent and the report. Yeah, so, well, first and foremost, I just want to share, and Director Larson will probably share more about this, but the very important legislative session started a few weeks ago. I know there's a lot of interest in that this year because this is the big legislative session where we're talking about the budgets, a lot of budget and changes in bills. I have, in the last two to three weeks, provided both a written and in person testimony. The three focus areas I've been focusing on, which a lot of superintendents have been working on as well, or we call them the big three, which are, one, special education funding, two, transportation funding, and three, materials operation and supply operating the cost supplies. Funding is called M S O F I D. That's specifically what it is, which is actually, it says three things, but it's actually a lot of things that we find for our operating budget. And so I'm actually going back again to Olympia on Thursday. There's another bill coming forward for special education, a little bit more comprehensive, which has more information on inclusionary practices. So I'm already have been slated to testify again on Thursday. So I just want to share that, so there's three ways. So if those of you who are paying attention to the bills, you can actually send in written testimony. You can sign up to do online testimonies, and you can do that through Zoom, or you can go in person. So it's a very interesting process. I've been really trying to do, be in the force with several of our area superintendents. And so I'm going on a panel of four, making sure that it's, we're trying to do everything we can to get more funding for Tuckwilla School District and advocate for Tuckwilla School District. So just sharing that is, and like I said, Director Larson can share more about that. I also just want to share that one of the things that I know that there's been a lot of changes nationally. And I just want to share that we are closely monitoring everything that's happening. We're trying to be really responsive and communicate what we can when we can. But the other thing we're trying to do really hard is just make sure that we are informed. We have the right information, and we work together to figure out the best way to implement any changes that we have. So I just wanted to let everyone know that we are just monitoring any impacts, especially even when we're thinking about funding or any of those things, we're monitoring all of those things. So I just wanted to let everyone know it is something we're paying attention to, and we'll continue to update as we need to. I just want to share formally, welcome our new student representative to the school board, Rihanna's Ellen Cruz. Thank you. I think Rihanna, we interviewed Rihanna, we had another candidate who was excellent as well. But I think that Rihanna's voice will be valuable student perspective to our board discussions, ensuring that our students' needs and experiences remain at the heart of all the decisions we make. And I just look forward to working with you and getting to know you and all your contributions that you're going to give to the board. So welcome, we're really excited you're here. And you've got two mentors beside you that can really support you, so lean on them. Alex and Eden are amazing, and they will be really great people to help steward you in this work. So really wonderful. And then, again, a great honor to our National Board Certified Teachers. I'm really excited for all of you, and I'm really excited for Tuckwilla School District because that is just such a value added for us. And then just some district updates really quickly, budget advisory committee that happened last week. The next one is March twentieth. And then we have our density safety, what we're continually planned for, so we have that committee coming up. We have, so those of you who want to talk to me and Carly, just chat with us. So come, so even though it's at a school, it doesn't mean it's just for that school. So it's for anybody, and it's eight and nine, and we'll talk about it. This coming up on February fifth, it's going to be at Cascade View. And so, and we're, we just hang, like, we're, like, we're just hanging, we have coffee, we're sitting there. Sometimes a family came up, one time they spoke to us, Carly just sat there and listened while we were talking in Spanish. So it's very chill. So if you have time, parents, even if you're at another school, come and just talk with us and ask us your questions or even just get to know us a little bit. It's very casual, it's whatever you want. So but come, hang with us, we would love it. Because I think we're getting sick of just talking to each other a little bit. And then we have a graduate committee, so we had to postpone that a little bit due to all that's a little activity in January. So we decided to postpone that, that's going to be happening February sixth on Thursday. And then, like I said before, the legislative session is in session, so please talk to one of us if you're interested in figuring out how to get more involved. There's still time because it's, what? There's still time because it's, what, when was the last day? David is in April or something like that, April. So there's lots of time. So there's lots of ways you can be involved. Anyway, thank you very much. Happy Easter, everybody. All of six? I think it's three. I'll give you the information. Next is our board reports. Along with Director Larson, you're going to start.
So, what happened to extend the list here is going and. There's, so I'm going to start giving a monthly report on kind of tracking some of the bills that we're looking at. This is just to start. Actually, there's another one that I was just thinking about when we were talking about the National Board Certified Teachers. There's, there's a bill unfortunately that wants to pause the payment for National Board Certified Teachers, which under IGO, it's already testified against that one. And there's obviously a lot of teachers that are concerned about that one. I'll add that one on the list as something that we should track and see how it's going to be, looking to save money with it or something. But anyway, it's particularly, it's particularly harmful to us because there's a bonus that comes if you're working on a high poverty school, which, you know, so a lot of our teachers get the extra from that as well. The other big bill that I went down and testified for last week, which I've been working on for several years is the, it's fifty one twenty, that one about high poverty. So that provides significantly more money. It would provide probably for our schools if it went through as is. Another four hundred thousand dollars next year, and then another six hundred thousand on top. It's phased in, but all of our schools would qualify under that category. So it's a significant amount of money. It was, it was a really good session. There were seven people that testified along with myself in person when we were down there, all of them testifying in favor of it. So that was in front of the Senate Education Really Learning and Intensive Committee, which has to get through that first. And we're waiting to see, I'm pretty confident we'll get voted out with a new pass and then it goes on to the Thunberg Battle, which is the Ways and Means Committee, which is the budget committee. And at the end, we probably won't know about one until the end of the session in April because they don't actually do budgets until the end and they leave them at the last minute. But the good news is it's on the table. And so that, along with the funding for transportation, which is the fifty one eighty seven, that would be really helpful because it's another four hundred dollars for you for the KENI DVO students, so those who are experiencing homelessness, which we have about, you know, ten percent of our, so, of our students. So that's, that's another, that would be another hundred twenty thousand right there. And then I listed two of the special education, as Dr. Gray mentioned, there's actually more. I'll try and address the other ones. There's a lot of interest in increasing special education funding this year. Those are two of them. It's a significant bump up. You know, the multiplier, what is it, about one point oh six or something, I think, additional, and it's going up to one point five two. So that would be a good couple of money. So this would help us a lot in our, all these areas, transportation, special education, about high poverty. And then the material supplies and operating costs. There's a bill for that one as well, which also would increase significantly. So it'll be interesting to see. We probably won't, it's unlikely we'll get all of all of them, but, you know, maybe at least some of all of them would be nice. And we could start stringing out the financial situation. The, oh, the other thing I mentioned on the, about high poverty is nice because the Washington Observer, which is an online newspaper, they did an article in favor of that. So time seditorial staff has come out in favor of it. So it's getting a lot of, a lot of support. So I'm hoping that we'll get some money out of that one. On last Wednesday, I went over to Islandwood, the education camp with the Tuckwell Elementary Fifth graders. And it's a, it's a really good facility over there. I've been going many years to Osprey Camp and down around Olympia and before that Camp Thunderbird in Olympia. Islandwood is a much better facility. People call it the Cadillac of education, but it's, it's a really nice place. It's got lots of indoor room for, you know, I know a lot of people were concerned about going in the middle of January, not the nicest time to do an education camp. But fortunately, we've been really lucky the last three, three weeks. There's like no rain around here. How else did that happen in Taylor, Nether? So it was, it was cold over there for sure. You can bundle up and the students had a great time and everybody was well-toed and had a good time. They, the other, kind of one of the big advantages of that place is it has very professional staff. In the old versions, we had to depend quite a bit on the teachers and the high school students to run activities. And over there, they have a full-time staff that does it. So they, to be honest, the, the science portion of the camp is much stronger than what we've had in the past. Osprey Camp was, I think, a little stronger in some of the arts aspects to it, but this camp is much stronger in terms of science, which is really important. So I, you know, came away very favorable. I know this year we had a little trouble getting, I think, at Tuckwell Elementary, we only got two-thirds of the fifth graders signed up to go. I think we can probably improve that quite a bit once the program gets rolling. And if we can stay on it for a few years, that would be really, really nice. So anyway, that's a, it's a, we had, the high school students were there and they did get an opportunity to lead some of it, which was nice. I mean, the professional staff over there was leading some of it and also our high school students had a chance to lead some as well. And it's apparent chaperone. So it was a good team effort by everybody. I was going to suggest, I talked to Dr. Pedroza about this, that it's probably time, we haven't done this for a while. We had a, a, a meeting with the city council and the school board, you know, because we have now a number of things on the list that I think would be helpful to talk with them. One of them, of course, is the safety issue. They're not really good. The various immigrant issues that are coming down to the federal government. I'm pretty sure that the city and the municipal district are in sync on that, but, you know, just to kind of make sure. We have the, the Hundred Forty Fourth Street Bridge, which is unsafe and a lot of our students are walking across that bridge over I five every day. It's, it's, I've been working on that for a while. The state or the city says they have. Again, some funds starting next year to design it, but just keeping that, that's been there for a long time. Just to keep that one up on the, up on the list. We also have, you know, we're going to have, be going into some probably parking issues with the, with the pool. The pool wants to expand and, you know, we could probably use more parking up there. And so, anyway, that's a thing where I think the, the city could be helpful in, in kind of zoning or planning sort of issues. So anyway, it just seems to me we've done this before. This open public meeting in the city council and the, and America, I mean, we just kind of talk about our, our common issues. I think can be helpful in raising some of these, particularly the Cascade View fifty one, which is kind of the top of our list at this moment. But the other ones, well, we have them there, so. I did, let's see, oh yeah, Alex mentioned the visit to Olympia, so that's on February twelfth. And I've got locked in our legislators. I'm working on getting one of the justices from the Supreme Court to talk with us. And then I may get visitors to the Secretary of State's office or something. I'll see what else I can round up there. But anyway, the Supreme Court justices are, not a lot of students go down and see them, but they love to talk to students. So I'm certain I'll get somebody. And that's really, it's right across the street from the state Capitol, Temple of Justice. It's been remodeled. And so that's really a good, particularly for our aspiring attorney down there, to talk to some of the justices would be fun. And, oh, the last thing I just wanted to kind of push, I don't know if people have been following, but the Foster Boys Basketball Team is actually doing really good this year. They're the top of their league and they'll be playing on Friday up at our court against the, the rival, who's also at the top of the league, Lindbergh. So it should be a really good game. So I encourage people to pick them up for that one. That's it. Thanks.
If you have questions. I have just one question about the, I'm sure it's not lost on legislators, like the impact potentially of federal funding loss. And do you, do you have any polls on if there's conversations or might additional goals that could be introduced to help offset?
Yeah, I didn't know. So just today, you know, the, the famous mail from the OMB froze all monies going out. And I haven't really heard that legislators, it's, it's, it's a tough environment because they don't quite know what to react to when something happens. The good news for us is, you know, our extra dollars have been spent. So our federal dollars come way down this year. It's, it's not trivial, but title one dollars, a few dollars. And, yeah, I haven't, I'm sure there's, they will be, I mean, the governor came out with an executive order, you know, kind of on the whole immigration issue of, of setting up support systems for everybody. So that was really good to be in, in the state. But, yeah, I'll be listening. I'm sure there'll be discussion about that. It depends on, you know, it's hard to say how far that, that, I mean, is this going to be, is this something they just threw out there? It's going to be gone in a couple of days? Probably not, but anyway, we'll see.
I'd be interested in if you do hear anything, just to share on that, yeah. Great. You have the grantor?
It's kind of busy. This is busy. One. Good to hear about the Islandwood camp. We were working with the school district to get coats for kids throughout December. So they delivered several hundred. And I was told in time for the fifth graders to go to Islandwood because a lot of them had been prostituted. So kudos to that. To reason why I did. Several hundred brand new coats for all ages. But particularly, they said it was before the fifth graders got to the cap. So we're excited about that. Secondly, we're really excited to have an opportunity to work with Thorndike, Master Mayor Reed. So a little gentleman, cap out aside, we all got to hang out with interim principal Herta and reading for the students. It was a good day, great day, great day. Two, and, and, and you can help if you need me to push pause on this. I have a February sixth, one o'clock appointment with the mayor.
Yes, no, I would say go ahead because.
I reached out to the council member. We talked. I got a, I think it's next Thursday, a meeting with the mayor. So on that, what's going to be.
Yeah.
That CD.
Yeah, I would say go ahead. I think we had to, to, in the past, it's hard to get the two bodies to tie them. So go for it.
All the angels.
So, so, yeah, so that, those are some of the things we're, we're, we're working on. So I'll be talking with the mayor and one of the council members and somebody else over there about that. I, I didn't have a bridge on my notes, so if you want me to, I'll have it. I won't let it off the road to you. I'm coming in with a can of paint. Something painted today. How to get that done. So those are the things I've been working on. It's really, 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 a busy day. So it really, I really enjoy being in the classroom again. I was reminded why we do it. Then I was reminded of my adulting a little bit. Yeah, sorry.
There's a, a couple of things, and I forgot to say that there was a couple of nice newspaper articles. Proctor was in the Seattle Medium. And I had an article with me and the Washington Observer and Seattle Times, I said, had supported our about high poverty. So we had a bunch of good, good media.
Do you want to open the salmo area?
I guess. It was great, 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 great time hanging out with you. And that was fun.
It was really nicely done, by the way. Very nicely. Just a few things for me. Honestly, my, most of my work has been pretty consumed in just thinking about our district alignment in response to the last eight days. Conci and I have been meeting regularly, just to kind of make sure that we're staying on top of the potential impacts. You know, I, I really have sought throughout this whole thing to be as proactive as possible rather than reactive, which is of course hard. You don't actually know what the things are going to be and then what things mean. But trying to be as, you know, measured as possible and non-alarmist, right? And again, not reactive, but, so I spend a lot of time like digging into the actual texts of the executive orders that have been happening and then really trying to understand her local perspective, like what that means, what things are even possible, right? What things are illegal, what things are not. You know, I think, you know, so much of this is distraction, right? And so I think I'll just use this small point of privilege, just encourage folks to not check out right now. It can be really easy to do that because everything feels so overwhelming. So if it's even just one thing, right, pick one issue that you can be really intentional around thinking about and following and finding where we can, please do that. But now's definitely not the time to check out. It feels really easy. So we've been supporting the, the safety committee. I'm so grateful for the folks that have joined that, that have been able to offer resources and support. And then, of course, we passed the resolution two weeks ago at our last meeting. I think one thing that is striking, but I also think is, is interesting to know that Tuckwell has kind of been leading the way a little bit on this work. And folks are reaching out to us from across the state to get to get information about what we're doing, the resolutions that we passed, the guidance that Dr. Pedroza has, has sent out to staff, families. And so, you know, that, that's, that's really great that we're, you know, again, kind of supporting other districts through this work and also let's work figuring it out as we go and do the best that we can. As Conci already mentioned, we've got a copy of Conci and Carly, please tell us if you can, again, super casual. Or it can be serious, whatever you need and want. That's what that time is for. I had the opportunity to kind of stop into one of the civics classes a little bit more, but in front to visit. But we had a great discussion about, it's so funny, every time I go, they're always like, what questions do you have for the board president while they're here? And I'm like, oh, man. So we had some, you know, I always ask really great questions and really hard questions sometimes. But we had a really interesting discussion about cell phones. So the civics classes, I guess, all came together and decided that they were going to have some, so these little cellphone pockets. So students with a smart cluster, students will come in, they put their cell phones away during the class. And so we just got, it was interesting to hear some perspectives of their students on the benefits and also, you know, the, the anxiety that came up and having to put their phone. And I think that was a really helpful, insightful, as I've been kind of thinking about what our own cellphone policies could potentially be, knowing, of course, the significant impacts that cellphone have, cell phones, social media, all of these things have on us and particularly our youth people. So that was a really fun, fun conversation towards, to bring that conversation to the board at some point in the near future.
I just got a spanner of things. iTunes, a total accidental tourist. I showed up at the bingo night over at Cascade View Elementary. And I'm very, very proud after living in that neighborhood for thirty-two years to have this sweatshirt. Some of you may know I went to be a shoe, so cougars were, were the mom. Has lots of magic for me. And felt very welcome there. And the one comment was, and it's by me, a chance for you to shift your coffee around at some point. I know it's after hours, but they said that they, they never interested more than ever come to one of their PTO events, which surprised me. I just sat there, found a neighbor and did my thing. And Alex was there, but he stayed quiet. He was over by his sister. I worry that he was embarrassing me later when he said I was there. But that should tell you how packed it was. It was almost SRO. And it was very exciting. People had a lot of food, things to buy, and the kids. And I guess next month they're going to be, which I'm invited back, but I'm concerned. I'll be looking alongside of the wall, watching the kids have a lot of fun. But I, I will stay engaged with that, that group. And I, I plan to give the PTOs as well. I just think it's important for them to have an avenue. Conci's aware of one resident that came up and had a, a direct comment. And then there was a student, which was pretty funny. Whose parent is a PTO from the organizers, came up and asked me, what's the deal with the policy on YouTube? I found we can't watch it at school. So that student and I got to learn together that frankly, they don't have filters that are kids-only and education-specific. So without their parent's permission, they pretty much want to concentrate on school. And I think that, you know, that satisfied the student. And I thought that was a good thing for me, you know, as well. It's sort of common sense. I thought that was a good thing for me, you know, as well, it's sort of common sense. Uh, I've been attending the I G O N E safety task force meetings, and we have one tomorrow afternoon. I look forward to that, because I learn massively now, so every time I listen to the community speak, because. Nearly all of them, I think you might, we have been through this before, maybe not to the degree that we're going through it, but been through this before, and. When the same administration was in last time, so learning lots, uh, with the exchange of information there. Uh, thank you, Dave. He sent me a bunch of information, which, uh, I covet, uh, on legislative session, and. He had a two, a two, a two shooter for me, it was a long thing as well. Uh, so I I I meet, I I'm casual friend of, uh, a lot of our representatives and senators. And similarly at the national level, so it gets me a piece of shoot an email here and there and there. Um, I don't often go down and testify because I'm working slow and it's hard to get nick that whole trip down there. But on the fifth of February, I do belong to unions, and one of them providing a bus is gonna drive. For the state labor council, um, going on the hill. And I have been known to carry sheets around, and I need some for that help from you guys. Um, and just sort of leave them on the desk, as we'll leave you after we talk about all the union labor sheets, so. Uh, and that's been effective, because I leave my phone when they call up and say, oh, tell me more about this, so.
I'll make sure to give you whatever web pages on the shortfalls for to go to school district.
Just a little funding charts, everything.
Well, print you a few copies.
One page itself.
Oh, exactly. Uh, let's see, um. I I do, let's see, I I was. I love being invited to the selection committees, and I I think we buy, I don't know for full, at our our student rep level or not. But thank you for letting me be part of selection committees mid, uh, again, it was nice to meet Rihanna and. The other person who applied, they were both outstanding, and it's, uh, lucky, I think we're very lucky to have people like that, of that caliber. Show interest and save more means with us and weigh in and and pay attention and making the student voice count. Um, I'm gonna double check, uh, whether it's, you know, uncomfortable or not, uh, I I'm just gonna say, uh. There's a resident, Jennifer Castillo, who wrote us all the letter, and, uh, there was another letter that came back to her that said. Um, the Concy's working on it, and it's definitely a school thing, board thing, so I'm cool with that. Um, but the the matter was, it's, uh, hygiene supplies for young women, and, uh. I checked in, uh, after, uh, president responded, and, um, the conditions, at least from their point of view, are still the same. And so either we need to communicate that they've changed, or, um. We get a, we need to follow up and find out what's possible there, and I. So, but, so only thing that I got is what she said to us, and then I have a phone call with her. You sent a letter, because you do the letters for us, so, okay. But, uh, yeah, I I think it's, I just need to circle back and. Uh, I'll find a way to get settled and have everybody understand what the standard job, I wanna, um.
When was that conversation that you had with her? There was another.
It was after your.
Email.
Right, Gary is my next comment, which is Katrina Don, I just wanna acknowledge her publicly. She is just a crazy soldier for community in many, many ways. I. Uh, worked with her through Rotary and a few other avenues, but I've always been involved in, um, supported her. Uh, clothing, uh, bank, for lack of a better word, and she came into several pallets of, uh, clothing that were brand new. And it just got, uh, you know, uh, water on it, if somebody's, somebody's swivel system went wrong or something. So they couldn't sell it, and so she just said, yeah, I'll take it all, and she incorporated, I think, sometimes seventy community members. To do the laundry and and, uh, and, uh, dry it, and by the time I got there, it was folding session up at the store. Uh, just want to thank her because that goes directly to people like Highline and Toquilla and. You know, people who come up in a private session and are able to, you know, make a reservation, come up and get clothing, and she literally has everything. Uh, I'm just impressed with that, which led me to congratulations so far, uh, not going wherever it's at. So far, with all these cold steps, nothing's happened to our water lines, and so I just wanna, you know, it's so easy to look at maintenance and go. What up with that? And I don't want to do, I have either, I just think, um, stellar job. Oh, uh, earlier this week, I think it was Monday, I was on my knee walking with the dog, because I need to walk my knee, frankly, and. We went around the corner and found a whole lot of water, and then I was chasing a bunch of modern district one twenty five guys with their trucks and stuff staring at it going. I can hear it right here, and what it looks to be was, my dog ran around me and him all, and. Um, I said, hey, you know, is it, are we all those or why in the neighborhood? And the answer was no, and I go, and not to be annoyed, but I'm on board at school, obviously it's gonna impact, uh, Cascade View. They were already in contact with our maintenance people, facilities people, and they all knew there would be an eruption, and I saw our communication soon. Uh, it made me wonder if our guys saw it and kind of called up them, I don't know, but whatever the case, there's something magical going on. Where they know to communicate with the school, and I just thought that was. I, you know, that's startups you don't get in a whole lot of other situations, so I thought that was pretty cool. And I think that's the end of my report. Normally I'm not this long, but I just thought. There's just a lot of little details, and we haven't had reports in a while.
Well, I got the email about the, you know, the break, like the the pipe burst and that. I, I was like, oh, no, it's like, they're too fast. We're too fast, and I was like, oh, my gosh, here we go.
I guess I should say for that, that, uh, they get these breaks all the time, you know, the big under the street water breaks, their use of tracks. The pipes are usually three feet down, and they had that fixed within two hours, like, and with a blacktop on it.
Um, just to address one other thing, there were two emails that it looks like the whole board was not included on, so I will forward those to you. Um, but as recent as January seventeenth, Dr. Pedroza sent a response, um, so regarding the, um, Ms. Castillo.
Wonderful.
So, and I'll forward that along to you to everyone.
Alright, so for me, uh, yes, I'm also on the budgetary advisory board. Speaking, I was town CFO, doing a wonderful job. Uh, if you wanna give out kudos to somebody who hasn't stepped into very big shoes, um. Oh, I would say she votes of everything, and she getting us back on track and making it very plain. We got the community people here also involved. Members to do that, that's well done, and so I appreciate her hard work in getting that done. We're gonna work on, um, getting it out to the communities in in a form that's easier and understood easier than this big, big. Page, something smaller. Um, also, uh, what came out of our Saturday meeting. We're also going to have a, uh, we're gonna work on some sort of a public. Basically, the, uh, town hall with the the board, so this is not gonna be here, we're gonna go out to the community and try to find something that. Uh, that task was up to me and Dr. Petrosa, which we'll just be leaning on Dr. Petrosa. But, uh, happy to help her, so that's all I have to report.
Alright, and thanks everyone. It's been a busy, busy start to the year, um, and we'll, we'll continue. Uh, okay, so I can get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So.
Uh, all in favor? Alright, it's approved. Okay, so we're moving to now our board business and discussion, um, one thing before we get to that, just kinda wanna name, uh, Rihanna. Um, uh, so anytime you have every right and responsibility to chime in. To any discussion, to ask questions, particularly if, um, we are, you know, using acronyms or things that you don't fully understand. Um, we're, some of us are in that same boat as well. That goes into our, um, uh, one of our board goals, right? About just really making sure that we are, um, saying things in plain, as as plain, uh, as we can, so that we all can. Understand what we're talking about, so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that you have like ample permission, not that you need it, but to really. Engage in all aspects of our work and ask whatever questions you need. Okay, um, okay, so we, uh, uh, of course have this added into our regular board meetings just to check. In on our, um, kind of our board business that is lingering, um, usually if there's something in our board discussion that we can't resolve. Uh, right away, or something that comes up in a board meeting that is not on the agenda, so if we can't fully discuss it or talk about it at a board meeting. We will add it to this board business. Um, so just wanna kind of do a quick check in, if there's anything on here, um, that, uh, folks would like to. To connect about, um, and talk through, and we'll set this up data round, um, or if there's anything that might be missing that we want to add. Here. I'm gonna say, I feel like we're doing a really stellar job, actually. Uh, I I mean, some of this is, it's been really cool, like we're doing our. Agenda review meetings as well, um, this, uh, we look at this list and make sure that we are, um, you know, pulling things out and adding them to the agenda. When necessary. Questions, anything?
Let me capture it really long.
Cool, alright, um, I guess, but then we'll move to the policies for first and second review. Um, so we've got several policies, uh, to kind of look at as our first, uh, first review, first, sorry, first or second review here. Um, we've got two zero zero four, two one five one, four thousand and six six four zero. Um, so let's just start with, um, policy number two zero zero four, which is accountability and student achievement goals. This is our second review of this policy. Thoughts, questions, feedback? Alright, uh, next would be policy two one five one, interscalistic activities for the second review. I think my biggest curiosity with this is, I guess this is kind of twofold. Is. What about this is like. Impact, I mean, title line, circle back. Um, I would be surprised, maybe, maybe not, but if, if W I A A. I guess I just, do we move forward? This is a question that I feel like I know they have a right, a right answer to for myself, but I feel like we should put it on the table, do we move forward with this policy? Um, knowing that it may very quickly be out of alignment with the law.
So it's my opinion, and I am a benefactor of title line in ginormous ways, uh, when I was there, when it was brought in, it made a huge difference in my. Well, some of this, uh, wires that were addressed in terms where, uh, it's great for some people. Uh, it's good for us to say what we literally believe is the right thing, and I just wanna say. At work and everywhere else I'm at, and legislative, unless you actually have it, Chris, of all, and know. Then you go with what you know at the time that you're doing it, and then you amend it later. Well, that's, I just. But that's our intent.
This one is not up for.
Approval?
Approval today, right?
No.
Okay.
They'll keep coming back if you guys decide to move it, so.
Okay, um, then I think if folks don't have any. Opposition to this, I probably motion to move it forward for approval at our next board meeting.
Make them enter.
What's the difference? I don't know. Can I, I'd like to entertain a motion. Okay, uh, do we have to all in favor of that one, or is that just a motion? Yes, okay, all in favor of that motion? Okay, so we'll move it to approval at our next board meeting. Great, that way it gets, um, on the books as soon as possible. Well, can you do that for the last policy as well? On the student account.
If there's no changes.
I see, okay, cool.
Yeah, it was like the thing I said, go to the website of that.
Got it, okay. Great, um, okay, next one is, uh, four thousand, public information programs, our first review of this policy.
So the one that, one kind of thing that seems to be missing from this, and it may go in another place, is the, I mean, there's. We got lots of policies about, so this is about community, parents, staff, we're kind of missing the student policy. Uh, I mean, we have, we have a little policy around the student rep, okay, that's good, but. Um, I'm thinking we need something, whether, whether it's included. As a paragraph in this one, or whether it's a separate one, either way is is fine, it just seems like we're missing a. A call out for the student voice, and, you know, I mean, because we've. Just initiated the first student advisory, um. Council, which, um, probably should be kind of memorialized more in either procedure or policy or something, though it doesn't. Doesn't go away or something like that.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, particularly Rob, though, the the student piece.
So, I have a couple of comments. One, um, I actually think communications have been stellar and. A lot has been done, but I know I think that from parents from even the beginning of the school year have no idea where to go with the information. Which leads to the comment that was made by the advisory board.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's gotta be really simple, but I don't know how you. You get everything to know to go one place or whatever. I don't know if you think we have one hub for sure. Um, some of these people are very concerned at the time of the school registration, and I'm not always sure what's happening. And then the next wave is school materials, whether the teachers are gonna give it to them, just for such supply their kids, things like that. Um, so there seems to be a little confusion, I don't know if any of this covers that, again. Uh, what I see is stuff. There's a lot of, and I'm always actually impressed by the volume you put out. The question is, are we channeling now? Especially parents, if it's back for parents, or then students, if it's meant for students, uh, um. See what's going on there, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it almost makes me wonder if we could add something in here about, uh, some sort of like technical education. I don't, I don't have any language around that, but.
Kind of like an onboarding.
Yeah, or like some intentional thing where someone from the district is going to, you know, the parent advisory or. I I don't, something that we can do to like, help folks be able to understand again all the platforms, every communication that would be, so that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the the suggestion from the gentleman earlier around the technology workshop.
And if you could bring it to like a PTO night, it's not too dry for people, you know. Uh, if it's like Phil, I'm the science guy, and make it fun and easy like teachers do. I think parents would watch and and care, and if it was translated, I think they would watch and.
So we can add some, some language in there around that, and then it can, it can be broad, and then the procedure you can put out.
Okay, and then the second one, I was at the bottom here, maybe think of something, uh. I'm at that age where I forget what I'm thinking sometimes, uh. Okay, I think go ahead and tell them.
We'll definitely get a second review, um, on this next, next one. Great. Anyone else have something on Sponcy?
Uh, I'd like to make a comment. Um, and this is more to the broader, you know, goal of better communication across the district. At least, you know, from my experience, communication from like district wide, you know, sources. Is kind of a joke, you know, with a lot of, uh, the, you know, groups that I am in, and also. Feel within, uh, kind of the common, you know. Body of students, and whatever we do and whatever policies need to happen to ensure communication. Is thorough and open, uh, it it needs to improve, at least improve to the point where, you know. Whenever I joke about communicate, if I ever joke about communication to a group of my friends, they don't all start laughing. Uh, which is kind of the commonplace, um, attitude towards communication from the district. At least within my experience.
That, in the term of bringing that up, that that also, I think, connects with, you know, again, the, I think, adding the student piece in here. Um, and so maybe there's an opportunity to add something around kind of leveraging the the student advisory committee. To establish a communication plans for our students specifically, um. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, uh, this, this mode. Yeah, I guess, uh, this, this mode is, has become very generational.
Yeah, it'll be a moving target.
Yeah, it's a moving target, so this is one where you absolutely effectively communicate with students, you have to talk with them to find out what's gonna be effective for communicating.
By the time we figure it out.
Yeah.
It'll be as old as this.
And we'll actually TikTok it, oh.
No, but like, like just the district has a website. Is there an app that can be communicated, that, that students can access general information that you sent out? Uh, I was just, just thinking in terms of, ask the student rep, say, from a student's perspective.
But I, I know the, um, some of the student groups, I know the Key Club pushes out through Instagram, you know, and I there's probably a bunch of them I'm not even aware of, I haven't followed that one, but there's probably other, uh, channels that I'm not even aware of, so. But that's just our.
Yeah, and then it was, you know, has a history, and you kind of know, or yeah, so, so my, my point is, I, I hear student rep, but we have to think you know, middle-aged man, so my idea is, send me a letter, I'll sign it, that's so snail mail, so there's a thing from there, John, that's being saying it's inadequate. And so, and we just gotta look at it.
The other, the other part of that is what's the content that they're interested in? I mean, if you're sending out stuff that they don't really care about, then, so it's two problems, but, yeah.
I remember. Oh, so the parent reps have talked about, um, political endorsements. I've always long understood, like, um, politics stop at the door, so as I go past the public, it's all the politics are gone, which is, I think, great. Um, I'm still doing crossovers from city council, where we would never endorse like a candidacy, but we might, you know, either do a resolution or have support for something like the school levy, which I don't know that we can do for our own levy. And so it might be good for us to understand what it is we can and can't do, and I also know there's a whole separate, if you're an elected official, um, and I don't know that it's any different for school members than, say, the council members. You and your title can talk to politics in your own circles any way that you pretty much want, in terms of supporting a candidate, endorsing someone, and I don't know that that can be any different here at the school. As long as you are clear that you're not presenting the board. And, and it's crystal clear the board does not endorse. Does that make sense? And, and I don't know if it's limited on measures or valid measure of levy things.
Yeah, we've been pretty. Separate the levy committee, it's, it's been in existence, whenever levy comes up, it's completely separate from the school district.
Right.
So.
But, so I've been on the levy committee for as long as I've found it there, and, uh, now I'm concerned that if we had a levy while it was in office, could I still do that? Yeah, I think I can, because that's what the law says if you're a councilman.
You just can't use school resources, school district resources in that work, yeah, sure.
Okay, so it's less that your curiosity around that particular section, but more like we maybe need some more education or learning on what that means for us to, to act in.
When I looked at it, I'm very, very little, so when I looked at it, this covers the fact that the board doesn't do endorsements of candidates.
Right.
But I, I didn't, because so what's missing is.
Is endorsement of anything else?
Yeah, okay, the board does can, or do a resolution like a council can.
I see, so it's like more clarity on exactly what you can and cannot do, or.
Just even routing this to where we can get that.
Yeah.
That's, that would be good, or anything else, go here.
Okay. That makes sense.
Like, I want those dreams, uh, maybe six hundred page book.
Yeah. Great, thank you, uh, if you want to, this one? Great, great comments, and we'll, um, uh, we'll look at this again next, next month, okay, last one is, uh, policy six zero zero. Uh, district-owned vehicle, so a school-owned vehicle, had a lot of great conversation about this one last time. Looks like it has now been whittled down to just one paragraph.
Which is a great idea.
So, so I don't get the Lambo truck, truck?
I don't.
I want one of those.
Or a parking space to go with it.
I have no further questions or concerns about this one.
Do you want?
Right.
Do you want a motion? And move it well?
If we don't know you two, there's no other comments or adjustments that H V made to this one. Sure, alright, so, okay. Great, this one will go up for, uh, for the next month as well. Uh, Deb said it's not.
This is tired of hearing as well.
Okay, right on, um, I just wanna say, uh, just a huge, uh, um bit of gratitude for the work that's been done on these policies, this is the most policy review that I've done since I've been on the board in the last three years. Um, so I just really, really appreciate the diligence and the intention of getting all of these updated, even if it's been like the smallest change of words. So a few different words, um, but that, that really means a lot, so.
I think this is down for that, they will, they all have, um, as a goal for them, and about policy reviews is one of their goals and procedural pieces as well, so they've all been working really, really hard, so thank you.
Alright, uh, so next up is our board goals, um, and these are up for approval on our action items today. Um, I'll just also like name that, like many goals, there's, they are ever-changing, right, or they can be. Um, so what we have outlined so far, um, folks have already all, all seen the anti-racist goal, uh, we've been making lots of comments towards that. Um, feeling really good about the promise of that, we made some additions to our community engagement goal, um, and to our fiscal responsibility goal, or fiscal management. Um, and so I'd love to, if, um, uh, Director Simpson and Director Legend could you share a little bit about, um, what you added, they, they were kind of owning those, those two goals, um, still got what you added, and, um, we haven't added sub-items or due dates, is that something that we feel like we should do before we vote on it today, so we can do some of that work right now?
Yeah, because that's your updated anti-racist equity policy that was done, for example, in December, but we have a couple of the chart, so it's just chart, so little things like that, you know?
I mean, the financial one, it's, it's more lack of resources, comfortable with some base, that'd be great. Okay, because it's kind of, stat particular one has a little stat look, so.
Okay. So I can work on this a little bit, depending on some of the things that we've obviously. Maybe I'll, well, when we get to the, actually, we can just table a motion for another time, um. Any discussion that we wanna have around these board goals, specifically the two new, um, new ones?
Well, if you want to talk a little bit, I would have done the fiscal oversight one a little bit, and you know, we currently have a, um, a policy that says six percent, uh, fund balance, um. Uh, the, one of the things that I've experienced in the past is sometimes we have fund balances that are too high, in my opinion, because if we're sitting on money, that means our students aren't getting it, so. So I, I kind of would recommend putting a range in there, you know, somewhere in the sweet spot, so instead of a flat six percent, maybe go between four and eight, if it goes above eight, it's probably too much, if it can flow towards, you know, not enough. So I kind of threw that one in there, and then talking with our CFO, that there's some various reports that we get on financials, and you know, I was wrestling with, okay, it's nice to get reports, but we need some, most of us need some instruction on what to look for in the report, so if, if, um, our CFO can maybe develop a few, you know, here's a report, and here's what you should be looking for if something's getting out of whack. The one thing that I was, um, got from one of the Washington Conference media breakout sessions, I think it was the the finding the staff versus students, because I think that's one of the things that did hit us so much in the past, we let our staff growth kind of get out of whack with our student growth, which is why we ended up, which is why, I mean, the result of that is you have to lay a lot fifty percent of your staff to get back in alignment. If maybe that had impacted a little earlier, uh, we probably could have avoided some of that, I mean, there's a whole reflection about that, but anyway. So, there's a couple of, um, uh, yeah, reports, and the other ones that I threw in there that I was adding was, and this is a big discussion going on in Olympia, is how much of our local levy is going essentially to fund, you know, basic education, which, you know, and that, that's, that's good information for advocacy purposes, because that shouldn't be happening, and so it's good to have the, the district's got it, and, and we did it as well this year. Uh, produced a nice, a very nice, uh, chart, which shows all the, you know, what's being underfunded in terms of, um, special ed and, and social last four years, because so also, this is another one I got, one of the Washington Conference things, was if you could show how much of our local levy is going to fund these basic education functions, that's another really good advocacy tool to tell those, say, hey, you guys are, are not funding us sufficiently, because you're supposed to be funding that, not us. We're supposed to be able to use our local levy, enrichment dollars for, you know, uh, after-school programs, summer school, all those kinds of things that we know our students need, so. Anyway, those are the, kind of thing I added, and so.
Great, so on the Florida eight percent piece, um, is that a benchmark of those schools? And even if we just say six percent, is that what other schools are doing across the state? Is that the norm for fund balance?
It varies.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a best practice that, I started something like, recommends?
The, the, the way, the way the six percent came up originally is if you look at, let's go at financial indicators, it's weighted, and, and you get a more positive number if you're about six percent, I think so, that's kind of a best practice, and I know the, the bond agencies that, you know, radar bonds, that, that's a number they're looking at too, so um, you know, I, six percent, that'd be a number I prefer, I because of kind of those best practices, if you will, um, so, um. But I, I do wanna, I, I'm more, um, I wanna make sure we have a top limit, you know, that it doesn't go above, I don't wanna go way above, because that says we're not we're sitting on money, that unless it's a good reason, there may be some good reasons, although that's unrestricted. Sometimes we carry over money from one year to the next, but that should be restricted, am I right about that? Should probably have our CFO talk about this.
This is why I need to come up, uh, Amy, for me to see it, she heard, uh, so, uh, across the board, I'm seeing, uh, fund balance percentage is run between four and six percent, um, and that's what I typically see, so if I look at policies in neighboring districts, that's typically the range, um. I would say four percent more in the larger districts, because that's a larger number for them, and the smaller districts are probably closer to six, um, is what I'm seeing. Um, and so, uh, that, that answers that question. Um, as far as if we carry forward funding specifically, or, uh, let's say we're gonna do a huge adoption. Um, because I think that's one that we are starting that conversation. Uh, and we have that funding available, we would, it wouldn't be restricted according to that category, but we could assign that fund balance to say yes, we are setting this money aside, because it's a specific purpose that we're planning on studying this next, and upcoming year, so those, it's kind of technical definition terms of accounting, so.
I'm not forgetting, do we have reserve funds? It seems like we wouldn't have.
Yeah, so we do have some restricted funds, so if we have, we do have some grants that we receive.
Reserve funds?
Not res, not necessarily reserved funds, so not the way classification to reserve.
So if we were in the conditions that we were today, and we're just in the paint financially, would reserve funds be a normal best practice?
Uh, I think it's a different terminology, um.
I'm using city talk.
Yeah, but, uh, yes, because the four percent, we would have been, we would have reserved some of those funding, because that's in our policy, so.
Because, uh, we're at the city, they're saving it up to seventeen percent.
Yeah.
For major disasters.
Correct.
Like a major earthquake, and they almost got scared into a flooding situation with the dam a couple decades ago.
Yeah.
So, that's why I wondered, do we?
Yeah, I think the terminology is a little bit different, but, uh, essentially the concept is the same, yeah.
Thanks.
I, the only thing I wanted to add on here, I, I'm, I don't like seeing four percent, that's my own, I think, I think six percent is good, the cap um, on the other side, I'm not thrilled about it, but it doesn't mean that I'm, I'm to it, I think I like the reserve part, I'm just gonna use that term. Because I think we need to backfill, I think we need as a district to have some money we can backfill after school programs, we can backfill if we have students from this country come in, and we need to get, you know, somebody, so we have to have a, a, a backfill part there. So I just wanna make sure that that's built in somehow, you know, into this, or as a, or whatever we're gonna call it, reserve or whatever, I don't I, I understand your thinking about, well, we're not spending the money, but the hopes is, and I don't know how we can frame this, is if we have so much money extra someday, that may happen, right, that, and we can come and look as a board, and look, and talk to the superintendent, the ones that say, hey, this is what the district needs, let's use this money that's coming up for it, you know what I mean, instead of saying, oh, gosh, uh, because whenever I hear, you know, government, any, any stuff like this, when we have more money, we gotta spend it. You know what I mean, and I, I wanna get away from that kind of, that thinking, I want it to be intentional spending that's gonna be there, and that we know what our dollar amount is, and that we can focus it directly on students, instead of saying, okay, we, we breached our eight percent that is money, let's go buy coffee paper, I don't know, whatever, you know what I mean, I just wanna make sure that there's some sort of procedure in place that we're gonna, that we're gonna do.
I think that, that's sort of an insurance against unexpected.
Yeah, and that's what this four to eight percent, uh, that Director Watson is putting in, um, this financial, uh, components, um, that's what that's designed to do.
It, it, it makes me wonder, just relates specifically to the goal of maybe actually broaden the language there, that's changed, because it sounds like I, I know, I wanna have a little bit more discussion about this, there's some, I, I'm curious to like get some numbers a little bit, but I'm wondering if it just be changed policy six zero two two to require, um, a, a fund balance range, uh, to be determined. Um, I, I think because if we make it a, a, uh, I mean, I don't know, just to give us a little bit more opportunity to have some more discussion, because we're prepared for a discussion around this today.
I would change the range to six to eight percent, having heard what she said about smaller districts, because there. Well, range is fine, just I don't wanna go too low.
I, I think for my, my, for the purposes of the goal, take out the specific numbers and just say a balance to, to include a range to be determined, so that we can talk about what that rate will actually be, um, when we're discussing the policy updates.
Yep, agreed.
Except that I think, you know, there needs to be, because when, when we produce a budget every year, I think there should be some, I, I was saying, as part of the budget development process, the board would each year?
No, I'm saying for the purposes of this goal, take out the specific numbers, because I think we need to have more discussion, it sounds like, so really all be on the same page about what the number of the policy will actually say, that's all, just for the purpose of the goal. The policy would be, would have set numbers, which would get to it. I just didn't, I just didn't wanna throw this one in off, to not have the information that we might need to actually make a decision about ours, is that four to eight percent the right number?
Because what the task is for us now is to have a policy process, exactly, six zero two two, which is when all of the, because not just the range, but other elements might be, need to be included in that as well, because one of the things that I'm under binding conditions, like we've learned a few things, right, so we've had, we've had to have lots of meetings, we've been quarterly, and we've learned a little, we went through that process, so it might be something we could do to strengthen that too, so that we can I mean, I'm talking about the policy six zero two two, just making sure that whatever we wanted to make sure that we infused, that is actually something that'll help us be stable, you know, with, actually with Director Simpson, I'm not, it's about stabilization, but it's also about making sure that annually, we are in, um, good stewardship of our, we have funds.
Sounds good, and the goal will get ready to, the prescribed percent? But does it take the N out of our SMARTY goal, or is it SMARTY goal that we're gonna visit this N?
Technically, it's not a SMARTY goal at all, these are correction steps to help us reach to the goal that originally was kind of like the, it, it says fiscal oversight originally, and we were kind of thinking around, you know, what are we gonna do to make sure that uh, when we get back to a more stable financial place, the board has mechanisms in place, so that we don't miss things, so that, to prevent it from happening again.
And I think that, that I totally agree with you on that, because as far as not, not just when we get back healthy, but currently, can even have these currently in the place, but um, and we will need to revisit six zero two two, because I just wanna make sure also that it's in there, is I, I don't, um, I don't trust O S P I's way they do it, and yes, they're tracking things enough, I think it needs to be better done here, we know what to look for, right, and so we just need to fill the policies here, so this doesn't get to a place of not um, having someone else catch it, that's nice to have a safe, but they can't do the own, should be internally done in here, so. So whatever that's gonna look like here, is, you know, as far as, I mean, I like reading the handbook as a board member. so whatever that's gonna look like here is, you know, as far as, I mean, I like reading the handbook as a board member, specific things to look for. And we're gonna have some, some areas that the community can also see, you know, if we're, if we're doing our annual reports here, there's gonna be lots of eyes on it. And that's what we want it to be transparent going forward hundred percent. So I just wanna make sure that we're, when we go to sit there, we're gonna address that. It's gonna be done in-house also because E S D and O S P I is always gonna be there, always gonna look over, but our budget's most important to us.
Yeah.
So also the other, um, you know, the state other, uh, the, uh, people tend to be, uh, backwards looking, you know, I mean, I wanna catch this stuff before I kiss that.
Hundred percent.
And so, um, and that maybe it tied, I mean, I think we maybe didn't have a tight enough relationship with the E S D, with the E S D. I don't know. I just, I, I wanna make sure whatever mechanism is, and it's probably us to keep an eye on the current, whatever the most current, uh, budget information. So that if it starts to get out of whack, you know, we immediately can take the appropriate changes.
Um, so, uh, I, I'd maybe recommend for the due date or one of the, I'm supposed to play the, the due date, uh, for the six or two two, perhaps we could bring that to the board meeting in, uh, the work session in March. Um, to, to review that policy with that. I know that like budgeting, we're starting to, you know, ramp things up, we're prepared. Does that feel like a reasonable time?
To bring much policy forward and to just have the conversation of.
To have a conversation about the policy.
I think so. I think they can have a conversation.
Okay. So that for, as a, as a kind of a, a, a due date for that item in March is if they may not be approved, but that's where the discussion will happen. Um, I think just the one other thing I wanted to just name about these, uh, board goals is, um, and, yeah, I mean, these ones specifically turn out to be pretty staff heavy. But just kind of a reminder that these board's goals are intended to really be actionable by the board, right? They're board goals, not district goals. Um, and so I wonder if there's a way that we can look at and, and, and really make sure that the, a board member or the whole collectively, the board is working with the staff and it's not just something that we're asking misfolding to create what's gonna go in the handbook, right? That we're really working side by side. Um, so that it can become something that we are doing as, as our commitment to making sure that this happens, not just about asking and directing the staff to do. Um.
Well, she and I sat down and discussed some of these ideas. So if you want somebody else involved in that, that's fine too.
Okay. Great.
Super.
Okay. Phil, can we move on? I know there's a few around the community engagement that are still being kind of, uh, finalized. Um, and we'll hopefully, uh, I think my request would be, uh, from board members, uh, is that by our next regular board meeting, so our board meeting in February, that we have all of this like nailed down as much as possible, right? So any sub items connected to the action items, some due dates. Um, so that we actually have some benchmarks, just like we've asked again, are the, the, the staff to do, right? So that we can actually look back and track our progress, make sure that we're on track. Um, so I just wanna fill these out a little bit more. Um, and I'm asking folks to, to help, help, uh, get that, get that done. Okay. All right. So now we'll now move on to our questions only presentations. Um, so, uh, mostly for rehonest information, these questions only presentations are, uh, presentations that are, have been requested, um, by the board or are legally required to, for the board to receive. Um, and we typically get the opportunity to ask questions before the meeting in written form. Um, so these aren't, we're not gonna go like slide by slide in all of these presentations or anything. Typically just gonna open it up for any additional questions. Um, I know you don't have, have it yet, but eventually you'll have like all of the information ahead of time as well. Um, sorry, just wanted to go with those, those work and kind of sometimes we move through these a little faster, um, than we do a, a full, full presentation. Um, okay. So Avid, the Avid report, what additional questions, comments, uh, do you folks have? One comment I have, I just appreciated this r- report. I think, uh, when we were at Showalter last year, we really got an understanding from like the student perspective, what it felt like, um, and what it, what the program, the benefits of the program. Uh, but this, I think, helped me understand a little bit more like the technical pieces of it. Um, so it just kind of connected the dots a little bit. Uh, which I think is something that we've been trying to do more of, right? Really getting both the, the report and then the, the actual like what it feels like and, and what it means to students. So I just appreciate that. And I don't know the order, you know, matters or.
We have a little bonus for you. I'll see if the technology works for us.
Oh, that's great. Right?
Yes.
Hold the video.
Hi, my name is Sandra and I'm in grade eleven. Can I have a question?
Hi, my name is Monia. I'm in grade eleven. I've been, I've been to our fire. Um, hi. Um, I feel like Avid has, like, made a very huge impact on my life in direct ways, not only actively, but by socially and yeah, I don't know. Um, for me and Avid, I was used to sophomore year by, I'm a couple of friends and I've been in Avid, which is the start of September last year. I feel like I've been, like, introduced to, like, a broader community in high school. And not just that, like, I've been, like, meeting new people and experiencing what it's like to be in Avid and I've never heard about it before. Um, I'm really, I'm really grateful that I've been in Avid for like quite some time because I've improved in my academic, social and ability skills. And yes, yeah. Um, I can't believe that I look up here a lot because even though I've been in Avid for four years, it feels a bit like it's like been like a short amount of time. Um, I feel like the biggest, the biggest thing for me that Avid brings like to me is like not only having friends, but having this community. Like Avid is very like a community based like situation, like more like majority of the time we're in groups, working with each other, we're interacting, we're engaging. And I feel like that's very important to have while you're in high school. Because some people might go like, you know, they don't have that type of community outside of the classroom. Um, Avid is I do not. Uh, I feel like just like being here, like sometimes, you know, like, I don't come to church a lot, but thinking about Avid and the community is brightening my day and wanting to hear it. And in our classroom, we go to the committee and we're very close to each other and living in their house. I was like, having friendships, nice child community. Um, yeah, based off like academics and so it's, I think Avid is some, Avid is something I, I personally like, what's the word? Um, I'm sorry. I'm trying to like. Um, what? So I think Monia is a favorite. She's been in Avid, she's been in, like, four years, I guess, in sort of the freshman year.
Yes. I had no, I had no idea, but wow, I was like, I heard about it a little bit, but like, didn't have like no idea what it was like, what you're doing in the classroom. I really, I really feel that Avid was one of like taking Avid and being a part of this is one of the best decisions I made in my life.
Yeah, I was introduced to Avid by one of my friends that's already in Avid or they're not a running start. Um, when I heard about Avid, it was like pretty interesting. I haven't been in like those sorts of clubs or communities in school and I've been just, I've been introverted mostly last year. Um, I feel like Avid has, like, helped me like improve not just in academic um, parts in, in high school, but like I got into, um, like a much brighter community.
Yeah, and Avid, it's not, it's not like you're being forced and you kind of just want to put yourself out there easier. Or taking activities, it's a very like good community. Um, yeah, like Alice said, I would, I have more experience in Avid, but it's, it's kind of just been like, kind of been a very like switched together, four years, so it's kind of like, like put everything where I learned, it's a limitless and there'd be just so much things that I've brought to me. Are, like, just, just a short note, we just thought Avid is like, one of the main things that I have going for me in is something that improved me every day.
Just coming into new class.
Yeah, I agree, Monia. And I also feel like Avid is like getting like, of course, they're getting you ready for college and your future.
Yeah.
And even career choices, like from what I've seen, like, uh, I have like struggles, like looking for like a future. And like, what am I gonna do after graduating? Well, ha- um, Avid is like, like a choice or, um, a suggestion like, oh, you can like, like get choices from here.
Yeah.
Get open to other communities and like recommendations from colleges and like, um, you can feel like the mind is like, we did some, um, what's it? We did some, sorry, I'm trying to say it. Right, you know, it's very long, like. Yeah, we did field trips. I mean, you guys did field trips.
Yeah, we did, we did, the one day job, we, we read about the campus, uh, with like, yeah, sorry.
I feel like, yeah, future is another aspect and like Avid that we did last year. Um, it really takes you to colleges like around Seattle, parents like you know, or in an Evergreen last year. And it gives you like, it gives you a tour of, you know, uh, like, oh, just classes we have here. This is just, um, an example of like, like, I'm sure.
Yeah, I did, I did, I did a college.
Yeah.
We also did some community service. We, we went around our school, like, and, and forced like, uh, like main problems of recycling, try to foster and now every classroom has like a recycling bin where they recycle paper. Things are a little bit recycled. Um, it's been, it was a movie and like impacting movements that we did and it's been a little start of community. So that would be like, that was really a strong thing for us, something that we accomplished and that was good. Um, this year, our Avid community is not as bigger or as stronger, but even like the smaller like group we have, we still are able to like connect each other and just be how we are last year, even like a smaller.
Um, great. Thank you for, um, letting us talk about Avid and we hope to see more students getting involved in that.
Thank you.
So, there's a little bit more. You can stop.
Uh, what I love about Avid is how it helps you organize for my classes. Oh, I joined when I moved this way.
Um, my name is Leslie and I'm also in eleven grade. And I joined just this year and, and like that, it is talking a lot about colleges. So I'm, so I'm one of them.
It's like a little bit, but Avid and.
Thank you for supporting Avid.
Pause. Uh.
Hey, my name is Sean Riley. I'm a national board certified teacher here at Foster. I teach junior level Avid. This is my third year doing Avid, uh, and I'm also site coordinator. And there's a lot that I love about Avid. Um, I think one thing I love about it is kind of four programs called relational capacity. And that means developing really strong academic and meaningful relationships with students. And that's, uh, that happens because I work with these students for all four years, from freshman year until sophomore year. They can see their ups and downs, trajectories. Each year has a very specific theme and I'm able to kind of help them with that theme as they, um, as they kind of have a strong foundation through the first years of high school. And, uh, a strong level of momentum for them to get ready for college and career. I think the skills in Avid are kind of universal when it comes to stepping, collaboration, inquiry, research. Those are all valuable and I see students applying, uh, those, those skills when it's bigger across the campus. And the just constant level of exposure to excellence and, uh, uh, concepts around colleagues that are often taken for granted by some, just, we've had, I think, in, uh, my class, twelve, um, twelve or fourteen career speakers talking about their experiences. Students right now in my classroom are looking at personal statement prompts, getting ready for that. Uh, they got the A C T versus the S A T. They thought they are pretty good, they folded it and found it. So we'll have that ready for the long. Um, thinking about career exposure, uh, not just through speakers, but, uh, through surveys. And, um, I think just the program blends itself really well to be successful in high school. And, uh, being prepared for, uh, freshman year of college, uh.
Thanks. So a little bonus to the, to the PowerPoint.
Thanks for that.
So you've got a really broad, like, kind of big question and, um, so I know, you know, last year when we were, um, uh, you know, we had to, our, our college career readiness work was impacted by the, the, um, reductions that we had to do last year. Um, and you know, I think one of the things that can be a challenge for big systems is when there's a million different initiatives going on. Um, particularly that are supporting similar work. And so I'm really curious about what, where the intersections are between, for instance, Avid, the career, career, um, college career readiness, uh, stuff that still exists, that the counseling department, uh, urban leave from which it also supports consequence readiness, right? So where's the overlap? And are, are all of those teams in a sense like working together and collaboratively? Or are they all working individually around the same goal?
I would say it's, uh, we're in progress and part of the restructuring in the last year. And it's within my role title as the director of behavioral education, career writing, of college readiness specifically. But I do work very closely with the rest of our teaching and learning team and in with all the, um, secondary staff as well. So we are revamping surveys more closely aligned because I think there were places where it wasn't as well overlapped. And I think we're moving along very well to where we wanna be. Um, and there's still going to be further improvements in the future. So we'll be forward thinking as well.
Okay. See, you know, when I see a number that, you know, a hundred percent, right, of participants in Avid graduated. Um, when we're college and career ready, like that, that's significant, right? Um, uh, regardless of how many numbers that actually represented, but, um, so, you know, we know, and I think we heard this, you know, again, when we were at Showalter, we hear, hear like the Avid program is doing something really meaningful, right? Um, and all of the, all of the folks that are working around college and career readiness are doing really incredible meaningful work. Um, but I think, yeah, the more they can be aligned and they also thinking about like where that overlaps with, uh, um, the ninth grade on track work. Um, you know, and is that an opportunity where, you know, if we're noticing, you know, in ninth grade, are we, are we supporting them and getting in with the right, either whether it's Avid or the urban leave or more intentional work with the counselors, right, to, to get them to the place where, yeah, so again, just all of that overlapping, you know, for the seeing, you know, how that continues to come together and stray thin. Um, so we're really using all of these different ways to support students. Thanks.
I'm wondering, are either of you guys involved in Avid or anybody else? No, I mean, like, no.
No, I think one of the things that Avid has always marketed kind of the middle, um, of the road student community isn't, you know, the running start or the, you know, the, kind of the high grade two, but they're targeting that, that public student there. And there's, they do a lot of this, I mean, the, the students mentioned at the community. So they establish this community and then establish a norm of, you know, academic excellence and pushing each other and coming in and you know, you don't feel like it because, you know, your peer group is expecting you. So I think it's, um, I look at it, so it's about ten percent of our students are doing this between Showalter and, and Foster. And so, um, you know, you can do kind of these all Avid schools, uh, which we started down that path at one point and then pulled back from it and I don't know. You know, pros and cons of doing that, but it, it's obviously, I mean, I've just got to see students over the years that who've gone through this, that is for certainly for that set of groups that's who targeting, it works really, really well. Um, whether it's necessarily. Um, whether it's necessarily for everybody. I don't know, that's a discussion, but it would be, it seems like, it seems like the acceptance rate is quite high, that's what it was. Are we, in other words, do we have a waiting list for this, and apparently not much, so, anyway, yeah.
I want to make sure Director Simpson was trying to ask the students, did you get?
I think, yeah, they worked, worked and ball, I just, you know, kind of, what I heard from your peers in there is even some of who didn't even know it existed. Did you guys know that Avid was available, or, you know, or how is that students being identified? I also kind of heard from the student's voice saying that, um, their community used to be larger, it's less. Was that because of the budget, you know, so I'm kind of just wondering what your perspective is, and asking kind of meaning on what, what, where you think you're headed to that, so.
Um, so from my perspective, I feel like Avid was really emphasized early on, like in middle school, so that, like, it could start early on and be in Avid, like, all through high school. But I was gonna say that, I think if you look at the senior class of Avid, if you look like between freshman year and now, a lot of students. Uh, or, I don't know, a lot of, I knew, I know of a few of my peers that dropped out of Avid for like a few reasons. But I think most of it wasn't really around the way the class was structured, I think it was more around, uh, like the social aspects and like the people there. So, I feel like if we've seen, like, maybe a decrease in that, maybe that's something we've been looking to, but that's just what I know from my personal experience. And the difference that I know that's dropped out.
And then we heard, I was, I would, I would make sure that you guys speak on this, but when we were almost at the Gates Education Roundtable. Were the students necessarily, the college students that were there, share some perspectives, not necessarily that all are Avid, but. Elements of Avid which will really beneficial, so I don't know if you can remember, at least Aiden or Alex, what was said there. Um, I just wanted to make sure you have an opportunity to speak up on that, if you remember or recall. Remember?
Uh, well, I, I was gonna say, what the students said was the organization, you know, the, the note taking, all those elements, those organizational skills. Those, um, those skills to help you be more organized and timely and follow, those are the things that they felt was needed to be embedded in all. Right, that was a through, it wasn't a really, they did think Avid is beneficial, it was definitely considered as a, as a, for people who took it. And so they, you know, ten percent of, you know, the kids who took it, it definitely was a game changer for them. But what the students said is, it was, it was more about some of the compete, the pieces. That really helped them be more effective in college, right, so that's what they talked about. How can, and the question they asked us, and they challenged us with the group was, how do we? How do we make sure that those elements that are really important for college success are embedded in our general education on all our classes? And that's what, starting in middle school, and that's what they said was really important.
So that's what I love to try, and I'm a little bit trying to hold my peace. Cause I think this is great, I'm looking at the slides, and as an academic, academic, let's keep it up, keep it honest. Those core principles should be, everything, every student should learn.
Yeah.
Instead of how we're funding Avid, that should be the general approach to academic. And I also understand that it works, and the, the efficacy of the program is really. I think the most unquantitative measurable is. When the students decide, this is what I want to do, that's the fuel. Now, that's not universally built. But maybe I'm in pursuit of an academic utopia. But I would rather refine resources for students. We should be where we're finding our resources for students who struggle with that, and this may be the lower. As opposed to, and I'm looking at slide, uh, six, could we put slide six? Think that speaks volumes to what I'm saying. Where, uh. Collective educator agency. Well, I think in contrast, insist on rigor. Does that infer that outside of Avid, academic rigor is insisted, insisted above? And when we start having conversations why we don't send homework home and all that. I think that's negative, right, so maybe I'm just getting it off my chest, but I just think that. We should figure out a way, how to apply those core. And, and only, only that those used to be core. Only will we gotten away from it and figure out, I think this should be normal to, but I don't necessarily need Avid, but. I think that speaks volumes that way. We have a, a separate program that insists on academic rigor, when it's like, that's what's your case in school.
It's one of our.
Right, right. Right, that's why, that's why I insisted on saying something, because I wasn't going to. But if we look at our values and our core, and yet, this is a program where ten percent of the student body is engaged in, so what is the other ten percent? What's the other nine percent doing?
Well, part of the, the thing is. How do, you know, how do you get, how do you get to that academic rigor? Right, right, and every student can get it in all different ways. This way, for those ten percent, going back a long time history, has worked really well for that set of students, great. But it doesn't mean, yeah, I mean, other students got there without doing this, I mean, those students had it. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's a constant looking for, you know, can we expand Avid, can Avid pick up? But the key was, yeah, you had to, I think you said, that you have to, the student have to want to be here.
Well, that's, that, that.
That's, that's one set of students, and then there's the other set of students, may not think they want to be here, and how do we get them?
Well, we, we also own the fact that a student that doesn't want, still needs that, even if they're not going to college.
Right.
Those, those analytical skills, organization skills, uh, team building, team code, uh, collaborative goal setting. I don't care what you're doing at the school, those are tools that'll help you feed your talent. And you're gonna struggle without those tools. Uh, so, tha- that's what I mean by that, that, you know, we should be figuring out how to incorporate that across the board. And so, yes, it's, it's a bit utopian, but at the same time, we need to be cognizant of that, like. That's, that should be normative, how do we normalize that and address that, yeah, not everybody is self motivating and all of that. But we, we should be having conversations about how to reach those. So, people do work, uh, um. Yeah, uh, we got educators that work in, we're in there. This is what they teach us to teach, and how, this is the modality, this is not the utopia.
So maybe part of the answer to that is to expand this, just figure out how to expand this to get more students in, maybe.
Or particularly knowing that resources for that are fluid. So if, while we have them, we begin to incorporate those principles, building wide, district wide. Then there'll, there may come an executive order, and those resources will dry, but we're still reaching the students, cause we were intentional to incorporate.
It was something that we heard last year very loudly, so we continued it.
Yeah.
We didn't increase funding, cause we could not, we couldn't settle, um, it is a conversation. And again, I, like I said, in the students panel, I'll just share really quickly, it's, it's, it's on the website, the Gates Education Roundtable. The students here are involved as, as I am, and we're involved with many people across the state, talking about the bridge between high school and college. What, and how's, what's post-secondary success, and not just getting there, but actually being successful there, so what does that look like? But the student panel talked about many things, but the thing they talked about was, the real thing was, it was running start, it was, you know, college and the high school. Advanced coursework, those were the things that they all said, and then they said in Avid, it, they said Avid, but what they said was, again, like I said before, those elements of Avid. So I think, I'm wondering what, so I'm always, so this is just putting the question out, how do we get to a yes and, right? Like, so wondering, keeping our integrity of our program that we have, cause when you, when you purchase a program, you have to have fidelity to the program, right? And you have to instruct with that fidelity, and so you can't really, but there are things that we can do to work through and pull out in other areas. And that's what the students said, that's what they would have liked to say in their algebra class, for example, or in their geometry class. What, they would, those organizational, being intentional and making sure that everyone has the same skill, or the same classes, that would have been helpful to them. And so those, it's not a yes and conversation, I don't think it's an either or. Um, but I think we can sort of have that continue to, to dig into this.
Yeah, I guess, and the students that I talked to, who graduated, and I run into, and maybe weren't successful in college, you know. For what, they, they typically, they felt like they just weren't prepared, you know, it was overwhelming, so. Getting these, getting these skills, you know, ingrained in them, yeah, it's entirely consistent with what you said.
Just a quick question, cause we could talk about this over and over, um, and I fell in love with it last year. And we couldn't increase, because we didn't have the budget, so I think within the realm of what we can do, and I appreciate the, um, presentation. I especially want you to go back and thank those young people for spending some time to explain those why it had meaning for them. Is, as a board, do we plan to expand it next year, do we want that as a goal, do we have a snowball's chance in Hades of doing that? Or are we gonna be frank and say, look, we're still under binding conditions, and we'll be liking to hold on to what we have? And then we just need to, I think, to some of our values, be transparent and clear about it. Cause there's no doubt we have passion for it.
Yeah. I think what I'm more interested in is, you know, kind of in the vein of what, what the conversation's been, earlier, we were looking at, so. Page eight, right, it says, show all through middle school, offers on Avid elective, Avid Excel elective, and utilizes Avid strategy schoolwide. Right, so I'd be curious to know, like, what are they doing to embed those Avid, A- Avid strategies schoolwide? And then what does it look like to scale those strategies, those schoolwide strategies across the district? Right, so even elementary scholars are beginning to, to utilize some of those strategies. All of our high school students, again, it becomes the norm of what, of taking some of the really successful parts. Again, running the full program to the valley, and then also saying, yeah, these things are really effective, these are strategies for all of our students. Um, so I think that's where I, I'm interested in, in going, cause that doesn't necessarily cost more, with exception of like time, right? Um, the general costs.
But we're gonna fill in that, the other students, I want the cultures like, and make it contagious, that, that's about it.
Uh, so just really quickly, to wrap up this portion, I know you asked a question about the growth or the decline. So, that group we heard from was the junior class, and juniors are the ones that access to running start. So there was just a scheduling conflict this school year, where some of the students were taking running start, because they were doing that great buildup to wanting to access college courses. So, they just weren't able to time it right to be in Avid during the school day, and at the running start offices, um, at their respective school. So that was just a scheduling issue, uh, and one of the funny things is that we do these reports a little bit in advance of when the actual meeting is happening. And so, part of what I've been doing is continuing to work with other schools, and we are planning on trying to find strategies to grow. Avid pieces, just like, um, Reverend Parker was saying, and what we are looking at is bringing elements of that into the advisory in the high school. And so we've just been starting to talk about that, and we're actually doing some professional development next month around Avid. So, we know the value of it, and we are continuing to work within the means that we have. Um, and then just knowing that in high school, and in middle school specifically, we work with a finite six period day. And so when you take a standalone course like Avid, it comes up to something else. So, if you take Avid, you're not taking X or Y or Z, and all of the things are great, but you have to make choices in life. And so that is one of the challenging pieces, so we are looking for ways to infuse it throughout. Um, and so, all of those things that you guys have mentioned are things we are actively working on, so, yeah, thank you.
Nice.
Um, all right, uh, next up is Wendy in the hot seat, uh, for monthly financial statements. October, we're also kind of lumped together the financial forecast.
I'll, I'll try.
Sorry, yeah, no questions.
No, no.
All right, what you got over there?
I'm just, I'm just looking at our trajectory, so it seems like we're on, on the rise, and it's correct, we're in the, we're above our zero marker.
Yes.
Um, I know that in, in talking, and, you know, it's different than, you know, school, just how funds are coming in and whatnot. When do you see our next spike down, I guess, what, what do you, what's our anticipation of that?
Uh, so spike down will be, uh, starting in, uh, February, and will spike down in March, uh, pretty significantly. And then, uh.
Can you just take a moment just to explain why this just?
Yeah, so, uh, what happens is, uh, apportionment doesn't come in equally, and apportionment is the funding that we get from the state. So, from, uh, Office of Superintendent, the Public Instruction, we still, we still fund it, so it does not come in equally each month. So every month it changes a little bit, um, January, December we receive nine percent, January it's eight point five, February it will be nine percent again. Um, and so it, it's just not an equal stipend. Um, on top of that, our property taxes, uh, come in, uh, twice, basically twice a year. Our big lump sums come in at the end of October and at the end of April. So, as you see, fund balance starts to decline, uh, until we get that influx of cash, um, coming in, uh, to our district. Um, I would have to say that the good news is, is out of the four million dollars, we have, we paid three point two for that four million. The other eight hundred thousand dollars is due in March. I will, I, you have authorized me to take an interfund loan. Um, I anticipate that I will pay back the eight hundred thousand, and then have to take that interfund loan, just to. At least to get me through April, um, and then I might hold that cash just for a little, uh, because June is always problematic. That's our lowest five, we get five percent of our apportionment. Um, and so that is a really, really tough month for every school district in the state of Washington.
So you're gonna take the full eight hundred out?
I will pay back the eight hundred, and then I will probably, I'm hopeful that I won't have to take the full, uh, authorization that you provided, the two point five. I'm hoping that I'll be able to get away with it.
Calculate closer to the curve.
Yeah, but I will, I will, I will see, and I will also keep you informed of what transpires.
Are you able at all to control costs, we see where it goes, I, I, I think the answer is no, but you get these apportionments twice a year. And there's no way to, you know, make those lines straight, cause there's costs that pull you down below.
Yeah.
Is there a way to shuffle any of this, like towards April or towards October?
No, if you don't want us to pay full or.
It's wishful thinking, it's wishful thinking.
It's, I'll just say, I think you did it at the pool.
Yeah.
When I was a practitioner.
Yeah.
To some degree, and made a big difference in the finances.
No, the only thing I could do is delay some of the vendor payments a bit, I can't delay it that long. Um, there's some districts that have become pretty bit combing in, and they've done a sixty day.
Right.
Uh, so they're not paying, their, their payment schedule is like, once every, uh, sixty days to their vendors, that is absolutely brutal. It creates all sorts of issues, so I do not recommend it.
Especially based on the, the history, right, you have, I want us to be.
Yeah, so, about paying our bills on time. Sixty days, and so that's where we're trying to maintain, is that.
And we are trying super hard, because, yeah, like based on the history, I mean, that's one of the things, is even, even setting the culture, right? Making sure that, you know, remember we had that bill last year, that was a big, a lot, a lot of money, that was a surprise, and I'll just say, um. We have to, we, we're, we, we go, we, we've contracted and signed MOUs in good faith, right? So I want to make sure that if we do that, um, we're planning appropriately, and we're, uh, also responding appropriately when they, when they're expecting their funding. Um, and I will say, we're also being a very critical of our contracts, for example, we paused one contract that we have. And I know you, we, you know, we've readjusted, um, one due to timing of some of these things. So we're doing the backend work a little bit to make sure, and we're communicating, very much communicating with our partners. So if there's an adjustment that has to make, and, and the ones that want to work with us are like, yep. We'll work with you on this, and we'll adjust, and we'll partner with you, and we are standing by you. So, I just think that in order to do that, then we must pay our bills monthly, to make sure we're keeping those partnerships, uh, in a positive way.
I've heard about, to those, that I grant going from state to federal.
Is that a rule?
Yeah, and so, it looks like, you know, we haven't spent a good chunk of that, because you said, several schools have had their, their grants moved by OSBI. Which, um, last year, that was, that was kind of disappointing, that the school's been kind of a full year plan for that money already. It, you know, we're halfway through here, and the, uh, and I don't know if it's the schools for not getting it in on time, or if OSBI is dragging their feet, I don't know, but.
Yeah, we met the deadlines that were established, and so all of the grants were taken in by the deadlines. And so I don't know what the hangup has been to get those approvals for the two remaining schools.
But I guess, given the realities of now, I guess we should really cautious about allocating that. But I guess, given the realities of now, I guess we should really cautious about allocating that money.
Right.
Particularly, uh, yeah, so. Yeah.
Well, so far, the concerns, or at least the expression has been the stop. You know, the flow of funding, it hasn't been retroactive. So spending, it's not a bad thing, it's just not.
Yeah, we don't have the money. So we have to be really careful if this does go through. And then, uh, that could put us in a pit. So we're watching very closely. But every school district in the nation will begin on that same goal. So, um, this, it'll be interesting, this will happen in the next few weeks with this. Um, declaration of, uh, pausing all federal funding.
But I am curious, is the, if, so if OSBI is sitting on it, why are they sitting on it?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm gonna reach out to them, uh, tomorrow and find out what the status is on why those two grants have not been approved. Because I haven't received any notification as to whether there's an issue or not initially.
Okay.
Fun facts.
The only other thing that I would find fun, just can be help you with here a little bit is how's, how is your projected student count? Are we, are we still within, uh?
Yeah, so, uh, December student count was obviously still a little move of January. We were starting to see some enrollment increases, um, and so our January one. Uh, I would say through December, but actually even through, uh, January, enrollment has been increased, increasing. Um, and so we are two students below production, um, in January. Um, we do not do, we won't know what February count looks like, um, until February, the first day of school in February. So, um, next week, uh, we'll know, I should know by Monday afternoon what that is looking like, uh, and what those counts are. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I just will add, just one moment, you know, like I said, we're watching, we're also monitoring.
Right.
And we learned some lessons last year, right, as well? So I think our goal is to be conservative. Use our data and be thoughtful around our projections. Uh, because what we don't wanna be, especially with the federal changes, we have to be. Just a little bit more conservative. I think, I know people thought we were conservatives last year, but. Uh, so I'm just gonna tell, just state it right here, we have, we'll continue that conservative projection and continue. To really look at data and one of the things I'm I'm gonna sit and ask our, you know, staff. Is to make sure that we are precise when we're, you know, unenrolling and enrolling our our students as much as we can. So that we can actually have as close to accuracy as we can. It's never perfect here. Honesty, because we just have so much transition and and families leave and they don't tell us. Uh, so we're just gonna have to figure out how to really land on that and, um, but I think our goal is to be conservative as much as we can.
Well, I have a question. I I know this, if this is true for the good, I notice you have attendance at Foster is eighty seven percent. That's well above what Foster, I mean, that's that's true, that's like good news. That's, that's really good news, because that's a big increase compared to what, so students are coming back to school.
And then there's a lot of interest to be at Foster too, so. Great, anything else here?
No, I'm just on the next one now.
Alright, next is the CTE five-year plan. Additional questions, comments here?
So I guess we're just being asked to approve the plan here. I, the one piece of data that I would like, and I don't know whether it's this one or, um. This, okay, um, I I really wanna see specifically what are the programs in this. The plan is a lot of high level, uh, stuff, but it's not specifically which programs. Are we, are we pursuits attending and, you know, by how much? Um, is that, I don't know. That you have another presentation in mind about CTE, I mean, um, getting down to that level of specificity. Is the purpose of this just to, I mean, this is a formal document that you have to submit to somebody?
I was going off of the previous series presentations and all of the formats from those. So most of the board is creating a motion for a different type of presentation. I'm not sure what we're looking for. I know I created a future educator report, which is a highlight of one of the programs. And I didn't know if we were intending to do like highlight of a program a year because there's multiple programs. Or are we looking for a digest of ten, twelve programs? Because that could be.
Yeah, but we just, we did get at one point a list of, you know, the programs that were, um. Depreciated, because I know the last CT director was working on developing more of those and. Various things in places in order to be able to offer the program and that. And then I I really like to see what programs are our students wanting to go into. Uh, so we get a feel for which, you know, what those, that. Do I need to do anything to do?
Yeah, that's what we, we, well, because I wanna make sure that, um, if we add, so if we wanna add it to this report, I think we're happy to do that. I just make sure everyone's in agreement that we can do that.
Yeah, well, I think too, like, the plan and the report are two different things too, right? So looking at the plan or reviewing the plan is one thing. And I, and 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 I agree, like, we've seen in the past, like, just information about CTE classes and programs that are happening. Um, so maybe it's, and and I actually think it maybe makes sense for them to be in two separate places, not to like. But I I I could, I could.
So I think it's because there's some different, so we have on the agenda the CTE five-year plan. If you want a CTE report with all of that information, I see. I think could have two different things, right? So we have the plan, which is just like the highly capable, exactly like that. We have a highly capable plan, which is compliance that we have to do for OSPI. Or for some guidelines. And then there's the programmatic, um, over the, you know, the information and all of the. So if you wanna, you know, and sometimes we can do them together. And so if you want to have a CTE five-year plan submitted along with maybe a CTE program, programmatic. Report or presentation, happy to do that, but this will make sure that the all the board is in wanting that, you know, as well. So just making sure that we're really clear, because, you know, we're trying to streamline things and then if you want them together. So I would like to hear so that we can then make changes and adjustments to our board calendar.
Yeah.
So making sure that we give our all our agreement that that's what the board wants.
I tend to be less interested in the compliance stuff because it's kind of hard to read. I understand you have to do it, you know, so forth, but what I'm interested in, what what programs do we have offered and what students are taking what programs? And and do we have a good, good interface with our CT advisory team with the community to figure out, you know, what programs we should be offering? Is that all in sync? None of that can get from this.
Okay, so we can entertain a motion for CTE report.
I would say with present, a CTE presentation, yeah, because it's or or report, it's up to you guys.
Highlighting the program is is great, if you want, but I also just like, you know, being a big person. No, 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 I just understand going into details on one report to highlight it, but but just the data about, you know, what are all the reports and then how many students are in it? I mean, it's just like, should be coming off of the course. Come on, whatever.
So motion.
Um, before the motion, I also had a comment too about the CTE, um, not referred to CTE plan. I was thinking back to the, um, educational roundtable and I remember, I'm not sure if you remember, around like, I think twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Those are four long, four hour long session around CTE. And we were like looking at research about how that data indicated that black and Latino students are underrepresented in high which fields. They stem and over overrepresented in lower which fields, which limits their opportunities. And we were looking back from like the perspective of CTE classes. And from my experience being, um, in biotech and part of garden club, which is kind of, has been a kind of the environmental science class. And recently doing a baking, baking and pastry courses, I mean, a baking and pastry course. Um, I was thinking moving forward in the plan, it can be more of an emphasis on like data analysis and collecting and examining. And examining enrollment and completion data by way of race and ethnicity to like mitigate some of these disparities. Around black and Latino students. And something else that's kind of practical but could be also also easily overlooked is also curriculum development. Just like making sure CTE plans, CTE forces align with like the current high demand jobs. And especially with implications of AI and everything.
Yes.
And, yeah.
I just went to a conference where they actually at some states have an AI pathway. They actually have AI pathways or a data, uh, AI and a, uh, technology pathway. And in some of the states, so that was really intriguing to both me and Principal Parker, you know, oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, so it's high, high demand jobs and also we should have an alignment with our high school and beyond plans. So that our students that were now starting early, if they say here's what I'm interested in, then we believe we have what they're interested in.
Yeah, thank you for that. And actually, what you're proposing is actually in alignment to our strategic plan, FYI, is one of our goals. I believe, right, primarily that's the goal of our CTE, uh, high, highly capable, or that that's one of our priorities in strategic plans, what?
That's a good question. There was an email from, I think, a finance instructor. About the future of the finance program being in CTE, which I thought it was, it was when I did that. School tour during the yes campaign, they said, go across the street down to CTE, whatever, CTE, open house.
Yeah.
And of course, there was the finance instructor sitting there with people from the department. Uh, I can't remember, revenue or commerce, um, really impressive. So I I got, I did understand that, I didn't understand the email and I didn't understand whether. Is it part of the CTE program already or is there some need to add more or is that in this? Plan? Does that make sense? It's basically stirred questions.
That would be a programmatic, I think that would be a program, wouldn't it be under for implementation, I mean?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different questions for just to that specifically, that was a one-off ask and there's different channels that we ask specifically. To bring the courses in, um, it would be a part of something the CT advisory discusses. In order to do the plan that I'm asking you to approve, we had a CT advisor meeting. That email came out of sequence, so that's a little bit challenging to address that in this given time. But it certainly can be added to the next agenda to be discussed. Does that mean that it's going to be enacted in the next few months? No, some things take time to implement. I would say largely, um, as far as enrollment goes, we can absolutely get that, um, just proportionality data. That is going to be folded in, like you mentioned, to the highly capable and advanced coursework reports. However, um, we do offer courses based on, um, the teachers that we have who have the appropriate certifications. And the student interest. So if two hundred students say they wanna take environmental science, we offer eight sections. We have a lot of it right now. And then there's times where they ask, um, ask for more and we try to hire for those types of classes. So if all of us are in, we offered AI courses, who would go looking for a teacher to teach that? But that teacher doesn't always exist. So there's wishful thinking and then there's the reality of who exists in the field to be the instructors. So we have to work that fine balance of the programs which the students want versus actual recruitment of who will come and work for us. For those positions, because they're not also, you're not teaching AI all day for five periods day. Um, in many situations, especially with how big our schools, so you have to be very cognizant. Some of the teachers within the CT department straddle different departments, so there's the finance slash math teacher. And they do a little bit of both. So there's people in multiple spaces and that's something we have to be aware of. We're asking them to be stretched beyond their typical capacity when they are CTE teachers.
I followed that whole time.
Yes.
I still had this, did she just say for several months there won't be a finance thing because of that sequence? Or did she just say we have, you you decide, you define, if we have the talent, which it sounds like there's a teacher there, right? That, you know, we don't have to go looking for it. And then my last statement is, I don't know any kid in the world that just goes, wow, I'd like to take a financial literacy class. As opposed to going to avid or do something with environmental science and grow plants, right? This, I mean, that will never change. But I know this whole board has talked more than often about financial literacy and how important it is. So. There were three questions there. Are we gonna not deal with it for three, you know, several months and therefore it won't be there for next year? And two, do we have the resource to have it there next year and we're just not using it? And three, how do we recruit them to want the things or take them anyway that they're gonna need for the rest of their lives?
Sure. So we do have a financial algebra course currently. Uh, I believe the teacher was suggesting a completely new course, which was gonna, they have to follow our curriculum adoption and first adoption processes. They're just taking time, just like when you guys approve board policies, we have those things internally, we have to do those. Um, so it's not outside of the realm of possibility, they just need to follow the appropriate channels as opposed to, like, you know.
Do they know that and are they doing that?
Okay, been redirected to such.
So they're redirected, uh, could be months, therefore it won't be part of the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Okay, but we do have the resource of not running them off the land because we'd like to probably use them someday.
These are all feasible possibilities, we have to explore.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, financial education, that's a little bit different issue. That's never been a CTE program, but it's a standalone program. And I'll tell you, lots of students want that information. And if you talk to the teacher who's had that pass over the years, what he'll tell you is when students come back, that is the course. If they come back and said what's the most valuable to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, there's students that want that, I also say there's a bill floating through the legislature. That will require everybody to make a graduation requirement. That bill's been around for a few years. I don't know if it's gonna get through because people are resisting more graduation requirements. But, you know, students definitely are saying, yeah, I want to be financially literate, absolutely.
They gotta, they gotta find a way to understand loans and credit cards, some found interest and, um, annuities.
But as far as a CTE, whatever, yeah, I'm just looking for the data and how how close are we fitting with what student demand is? By using some data, you know, I mean, I know we have environmental science that's very popular, great. Okay, what what do maybe students have that we don't have? Just, you know, so we can kind of monitor that over time and try and get that in balance. And what are the high demand jobs and, you know, all of that? Because, I mean, here it says, you know, um, make sure that, you know, develop additional CTE. Like the that the middle school, they refer students in their high school, okay, that's, I mean, great, but it doesn't tell me anything specific. And I understand completely why you have to do this, because that's what is required.
Two questions real quick. One is to incorporate, um, Alex's recognition. Do we, can we still go forward with approving the plan or do we wanna build that in? And then bring this back up next month? What would make the most sense?
Well, I think I, if I, my memory serves me right, I will be presenting some. Student, um, enrollment information in our work session in March around the highly capable advanced coursework. And I enroll that component in around the enrollment and, um, the demographics. But, for example, I created the future educator report, which is an entire report about one class of twenty-eight students. And it's got a lot of narrative information, so if we have thirty to forty courses and. Six different pathways, are we looking for a really comprehensive report over thirty classes?
So that was in relation to Greg and Larson's ask, I'm curious about Alex's ask.
I think that's.
Is it the same thing?
Easily doable, okay, there's a moment in time coming up soon.
That it doesn't, doesn't mean to be in the plan, okay. And then I think what I'm curious about around yours is, because I think what I'm hearing is that, yes, the detail of a particular program is nice and I think we can have that. But it's really like the data about the classes, the enrollment. And so I'm wondering, we we had the same conversation on AP classes, we're the same with data, so can, is that something that can be like? All in one big report that's essentially like, here's our classes, here's the enrollment in those classes, here's the, you know. Could that be all looped into one? Because I think what we're trying to do is also not add more reports, but streamline and and and. Consolidate some of the reports that we have that are redundant. Does that feel feasible? So we can essentially wrap the CTE enrollment, of course, into the, to the AP. And the presentation will be good in March.
Hopefully. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need the, the six, seven pages description of every single program. And then how many students?
Okay. So what I don't think I understand.
Maybe we can connect it when we're doing the, talking about the agenda review meeting as well, can we can cover it, make sure we're all the same things. But that way we're not asking for another report, but just an addition to a CTE component in the other report that you're already doing. Is that okay?
Yeah, and it's coming up in the next.
Okay. Okay. Anything else here? Do you feel comfortable with that? Okay. Okay, great. Um, all right, so that brings us to our action items for this evening. Um, so first, if I can get a motion to approve the human resources staffing report.
Second.
Alvin Behrner.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, next is the approval of the school counseling plan.
So.
Second.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, so my question on this one is, um. One of the most important, um. Predictors. Particularly for our students that are coming from low income is, did they help the paths in the Washington? Or had a possible coming back? And this is the trick, I've actually done a really good job comparing statistics and things. And that over the years, second only probably to Seattle, um, in terms of that. And I'm wondering, um, I didn't really see that. I see in the, in the councilor's, um, measures. And I, there's references to it a little bit, but it's, I'm wondering if, if it shouldn't just actually be called out as a. As they know, it's a number that you can get from the, you know, the state on it. And so. And it's a really, uh, I think it's a really important number.
Yeah, so Angela Bond, Director of Student Services and Special Education, she here for now, I'm here. With two of our amazing school counselors from Shilalter and Foster, Brian Gray and Maureen Torres. Um, and so I think that, yeah, that's a, that's a metric that does make sense. The, the plan was developed. Intentionally to ensure that it would be able to meet the needs of all five of our schools. And so there, there are areas where it might be more, um, suited towards secondary, it's elementary, but the one you're asking specifically would be. Secondary and foster specifically. So I think, you know, that's definitely something that, um. That the team can consider as far as that and then when I acknowledge like what, what would that look like and what would the reporting look like? So definitely.
Yeah, I just thought of those in place. Well, I totally agree. I think that's something we can definitely add. As it is, it's part of the, uh, high school beyond plan. It's a requirement for all seniors to complete the financial aid, whether it's back to our past. So it makes total sense.
Okay, so it's included.
Yes. And that is done, just so you know, if I can, uh, not earlier, we're talking about it. Streamlining college and career. This year we're meeting, we're monthly meeting with Urban League, which are their partners, Gira. Uh, and all the counselors to just, once a month, okay, what are you doing? What are we doing financially? That's okay. What do you need help with? So that's part of the one, streamlining with college and career that we're all getting. And kind of, you know, because in the past we were not really meeting all together, we're all doing kind of different things. You know, also like adding a little bit over here doing that stuff. So now it's like. Months a month, we're having discussions and we'll hopefully, and that seems to be working well and. We're really working with our partners.
What's the communication like between Shilalter Council Team and the Buster Council Team, particularly as well, you're transitioning from eighth grade to ninth grade?
Uh, one of the things I actually really get exciting about this plan is that really articulates sort of. A vision around where you're reaching together as a whole district team, like at those transition points and kind of talking about. How those transitions happen and actually what David was mentioning about Lawson, so we have an interest in looking at those numbers as well. And sort of like what numbers we look at. I don't think we view as a static thing. I think this is sort of intended to be sort of an evolving conversation with amongst all of us about like. What data points are we looking at as a district team? That are meaningful to us and we think are meaningful for our students and kind of sort of our shared vision forward. Um, so I mean, that's one of the most important things about this document is it sort of gives us the guideline. Uh, that sort of aligns our real intention to get together and to team and collaborate, um, just across the district. Um, we're really excited by this because it's like something we've been really hungry for a long time. And I, I have strong colleagues at high school. It's one of the things I love working in this district in my role because it doesn't exist everywhere that we have such a close. Team that's collaborating.
Sounds like you're looking at high level excellence here. Uh, somebody's hard to want to tweak it. So I'm, I'm gonna evaluate yourselves. By saying, what's in here that you wish wasn't? And what is not here that you just want?
Well, the, the great thing is, I think, I don't know, I'm always speaking for myself here, but Cory and I were both involved in that. In partnership with the district. Kind of developed this plan. Um, and I gotta say, like, we didn't reinvent the wheel, right? So we went after resources that are already in, in terms of comprehensive plans, just to see what, what things spoke to us, what things didn't speak to us. Um, and just the whole time was a real collaborative process, right? And so. I really honestly can't think of anything that's like.
So, so is there anything you wish you could put in there and just felt as it didn't yet? Where we're at financially, where we're at maturity wise or.
With capacity wise, at, I think at the moment, because one, one of the things that, and again, it's like just capacity, right? It's like. The student, you know, you know, many schools, you may have programs like a, you know, community. Or student, you know, there's a advisory type committee. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we can, right? So this is like an ongoing document and, and then hopefully like. And we, we can evaluate and see, okay, how are we doing here? Let's see, let's look at their data. What are we missing and what can we add or take out? Uh, I think it's, it's something that, you know, like, just like teachers, why they have frameworks. This is a nationally and state frameworks that have been proven to work. Um, with standards and student standards, mindset, mindsets and behaviors, which is, you know, what students believe, attitudes are all research based. So it's like just putting it together faster, you know, and, you know, and show all their, all the three elements.
And we, we did have participation from all three levels. Like we had social worker. And now three, kind of presence that would develop in this document as well. And the rules, like their school social worker, right? But they are the ones that are charged with implementing the comprehensive guidance and custom program. But they have the really valuable perspective. We have really robust conversation about how you meld, meld those two roles with two different. Like sort of titles, I guess, but still develop and deliver a comprehensive program.
I like that about the, that you actually have enough of the social workers and the counselors and.
It's really.
Building us, that's a more of a unified and with also understanding the roles and responsibilities that are different under those types of, of specialties.
Yeah, and I think just acknowledging that, especially that our coun, our comprehensive plan. identifies those areas where other districts might also identify them, but also aren't, aren't because it's not a requirement. So the inclusion of the social worker standards, both national and state are in here around like, how are we supporting our, our. Pre-K twelve continuum.
So. Taking its whole perspective was I went through junior high and I probably had no clue except for that I was trying to go to college because. No one had gone to college before my parents, you know, family. So I knew that was a expectation of them. But, and I know I modeled for just fine, but I look at all these ways that you're reaching out to these kids. I mean, how do we know that they know? Because I would have gone to junior high. What they have to do when in order to just keep themselves in the queue. For some opportunities and is there a parallel track if they want to go into the trades and maybe go to college? Uh, with the full pay, pay process. I mean, keeping that in mind for some of these kids as well.
And I think that's the difference when, when some of us, you know, that one, right, high school and miss, but back in the day it was guidance counselor. That term has been taken away because now it's school counselors. Uh, and that's because we don't work in isolation. We work with systems systematically. It may not be meeting with every student every single time, but that doesn't mean that our work that we're doing, it's not being impacted. Or carried forward like, you know, at the high school level advisory, right? We're, we're hands in there. With a master schedule, we're right there, uh, even CTE. So we, we're everywhere and that's part of. The comprehensive plan. I'm assuming like the same thing with the middle school and. Elementarys, where you have a social worker taking, taking those leads or those roles.
So the other question I have is, uh, so the district awards scholarships, a few of them, um, I sponsored one of them. And so I'm interested in knowing who's taking over. They're used, the person we used to have was a college and career counselor and if they're not. Who's taking over that job of, you know, kind of, they, they also used to organize senior awards night is, you know, whereas I just want to make sure that's not getting dropped.
No, that, that's a very good question because when, you know, when we launched our college and career person, like, okay. What, what, what are we doing? Right? Uh, so right now in getting a partner, we're like Urban League.
Yeah.
They're taking part of it and also one of the other council, Jenny Standard, who used to be back at our college and career counselor. So she stepped in to take some of that responsibility.
Okay. Just want to make sure that would be.
But I think that was, and now my question is kind of piggyback off of that because I remember having this conversation. When we had the career counselor in front of us and then we had to make the decision that that was, you know, that position wasn't going to be here. And I remember it was going to fall upon the counselors because what was told. To us as the plan, I just wanted to make sure. And then I remember specifically thinking, okay, so where's our graduations? Nope, it's not going to drop. And then where's the money? Because we had a lot of. Scholarship money given out last year and we were going to keep that same high standard. And so my question is, is are we on track with that high standard? You know, getting, maintaining what, what, what was told to this board. Last year about our graduating senior class or where we're at with that. And whether you can answer that now or very soon, that's fair, um, to it, but I definitely need to know that answer because that, that's coming very quickly. And so I just want to make sure that we're following through with what was said was going to be done when that position was put away.
Yeah, I don't think that, um, well, we don't have that data and information right now.
Fair.
And that's something you can definitely follow up either through the weekly memos that come out on Mondays, um, to make sure that. You know.
I'll just say anecdotally, I swag receive scholarships as well all the time. And I sent, I remember I sent to your team, uh, the email from the scholarship, like get them all the time. Some of them are, um. And one, I send them to the team. I love the response they got. So I'm just telling the team, we're on it, we got it, we already know. About this. So I was like, okay. Like, and so it was good because, uh, even I am trying to, uh, streamline that communication as well. But it was, it was a perfect response because what they were saying is, no, we, we have this, we, it's part of our, it's part of our platform. And we are working on this. So, yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's a very good question and we always appreciate those emails. Because you never know. It's like, I'm all about bringing money and giving up. Uh, so one of the things that we did differently this year, we've met with, we've been meeting with every senior. I have like one Wednesday that I'm still trying to get a hold of. Then talk specifically about financially. Here are the websites, uh, fast web and the local ones that you can apply for, you know, walking through the whole. Programs of, for the, for different types of financial students can get. And, and, and all of that stuff, it's given to the seniors and share out with them. Uh, we didn't always used to do that with everything, with every single senior. So they will have, they have that opportunity. So when we're getting those emails, I got that added to our resource to share out to the students. Um, so, yeah.
And the foundation of all that is still a counterfascist. Because that's the, that's the structure in which all that is built. And so that's why I'm.
Yeah. And, and our hope too with the, the, the top of the promise, right, is that that is also an incentive for folks to fill out that FASFA, right? Because again, if I'm like, oh, I don't think the FASFA is gonna, you know, I'm not gonna get anything, I'm not gonna fill it out. Not gonna go to college, right? Versus like, well, I know that I'm gonna get this two years of free education. All I have to do is fill out that thing. Um, that, that was the hope, some of the hope.
Which can be, we've heard, you know, in what's going on secondly. There are students that can be families that can be a little nervous about wanting to get their status. So that's going to be a, a challenge, I think.
And we have, and have had those conversations with students where they themselves are not impacted. They were born here, but they're like, I don't know if I want to fill out because my parents are not documented. So what do I do? I honestly, I obviously I cannot give you legal advice. I said, you know, that's a very good question. In the past, you know, there was two different entities that you never asked information about it, but I cannot assure you that now. We're hoping that it's not. Because per fine, all these other laws. You know what you think is going to be best for you. Uh, those are top count information.
But that might impact our. Yes. Yeah. And it's something you have to be aware.
Yeah.
And it's a student choice.
Which, which leads back, I know this whole conversation has been, everything we had before. While you do more with less. And I heard, don't have the data yet, but we'll try. So is it reasonable for us to ask you to do more with less? As I, I appreciate that they're highly responsive. Is that fair?
I think part of the, the, the strength of this plan is that. There's, there's always a component of doing more with less and looking at it that way. There, and then all the opportunity to really think about what do we have and what do we need to do? And then how do we prioritize what we are going to focus on? Because we can't, we, we can't do it all. We simply can't. So we really need to think about what are the priorities? And what are the things that are going to get our students what they need? Because at the end of the day. All of any of us are here like to support students next step, right? And so really thinking about like, what are those outcomes? And so. Kind of refining that and thinking like, okay, what are we going to do? What can we like, you know, do less of? What can we say no to? And then also the things that we have to do, we also don't have to do them the same way. We can also think like strategically. Around like, how, how can we kind of come together and put our brains together instead of like. Like the idea of working together on a monthly meeting versus siloed. Groups and teams doing the same thing, sometimes redundantly.
Yeah.
And so really thinking about like, how do we do this across?
And actually utilizing.
Yeah, yeah. So, so this, this provides a lot more like kind of. Uh, guidance and, and drivers for, for bringing those things together and also allows for some of that flexibility too.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor of approving the council plan?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Your being here.
All right, next is the approval of policies. There are one, two, three, four, five policies. Um, I, I'd like to entertain and most of all of them at one time.
So move.
So.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor of approval?
Bye.
Hi. All right, next is approval of the school improvement plans. Uh, we can do all these at the same time as well, right?
So move.
So.
Any questions concerned?
So I just want to say that this came with a copy letter that our. She had been produced and I. I've asked, I'm gonna be fine with approving these, but I want, I was like these, uh, goals, which we pulled out, uh, for each school district to be. Put in a table document where it's very easy to read what it is and we can see that you've been working on that. But the rest of it is, it is another one of those compliance things that I'll bet nobody read all.
Well, we've got, we've had presentations of all of them.
Everyone will care for that.
Yeah, we've had all of our presentations and that was part of the intent, right, is that we'd be able to see those in action. Here the administrators talk about that and then.
Yeah, that's what I'm really looking forward to exploring the path and seeing them too.
Yeah. Uh, okay, all in favor of approval?
Bye.
Hi. Um, next is the approval of the CTE five year plan.
So move.
So.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay, um, as long as we are again considering specifically the request that Alex had, um, all, all in favor of approval?
Bye.
Hi. So, okay, and then last thing is, uh, oh, um, I'm going to postpone, uh, the, uh, this action item of the. Those workables until our next meeting, uh, when they are a little bit more fleshed out.
So.
All right, all in favor?
Bye.
Hi. All right, that brings us to our last opportunity for public comment. If you are still with us online and would like to offer any public comment, you can do so by raising. Your digital hand or putting your name in the checkbox. Uh, if there's anyone else in person would like to offer any public comment. Thank you. Thank you. Practice counting down.
Is anyone off?
All right, seeing none, uh, uh, we're gonna get a motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all so much. And then you know, I need to sign your name. No.